All right. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Rafael, Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. This meeting is called to order. I'll request staff, if they can take a roll call of all the commissioners present tonight, please.
Where? Commissioner Davidson?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Here.
Commissioner Privatalli?
Here.
Commissioner Saudi?
Here.
Vice Chair Samutzi?
Here.
And Chairman Mercado?
Here. Thank you.
Just really quick, just to add and highlight, want to welcome our new Commissioner Hill to his first meeting tonight. Thank you for joining. It's a pleasure and excited to work with you and have you on the commission, so hopefully we'll get a chance to meet in person sometime within the next, who knows when.
Thanks, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes that the commission would like to present to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, great. Then we'll move into the meeting procedures. So due to COVID-19 shelter in place order, we have had to establish a new way of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how the public comment will work this evening. Rafi, if you can, please.
Thank you, Chair Mercado. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're accepting public comments over either the telephone or through our YouTube Live chat feature. This meeting is being streamed to, live to YouTube, where members of the community can provide public comments on agenda items in the YouTube Live chat at www.youtube.com/cityofsanrefel, one word. You also have the option for community members to attend via conference call at the following number, which is also on the bottom of the YouTube livestream, and that number is 669-900-9128. And once you dial that number, the meeting ID to enter is 872-0645-4435. If you will be participating by telephone and wish to provide a public comment, please press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period for the item that you'd like to speak on. Once you press star nine, please wait until you hear a notification that you've been unmuted, and then you'll be allotted up to three minutes to speak. If you're submitting comments via the YouTube Live chat feature, please submit your comments by writing public comment in all capital letters, then introduce yourself, and then provide your comment. Please note there's a 200 character limit in each box in the YouTube Live chat, so if you have comment that is over 200 characters, you'll have to maybe put it in a couple of different boxes. If you submit a comment prior to the Planning Commission meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published to our website. And for more information regarding real-time public meetings, please visit our live commenting pilot page at cityofsanrefel.org/live-commenting-pilot.
Great, thank you.
And that concludes instructions.
Okay, so let me describe the meeting procedures. So tonight, we'll begin with staff report, then we'll hear from the applicant, if there is one, and we'll ask that that be under 10 minutes. And then we'll move over to members of the public who can speak, and we'll try to keep their comments within two to three minutes each. Then the commission's going to have an opportunity to ask questions of the staff and the applicant when there is one, or the public after each segment. And then we'll close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for discussion, and when appropriate, a resolution. So next, I'll move on to urgent communications, whether anyone with an urgent communication, not a topic on the agenda, can address the commission at this time.
And thank you. I do not see anybody on the conference call at this moment, and in looking in the YouTube Live chat, there is no public comments for any items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so next, we're going to move to the consent calendar. And this has one item, which is the minutes from our July 28th, 2020 Planning Commission. Let me know if there are any comments from the public on the consent calendar.
There are no phone-in comments at this time, and there are no chat comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll bring this back to the commission. If anyone has any comments or edits on the consent calendar, let me know. Otherwise, we can have a motion to move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Lubomirski to approve?
Second.
Great, motion and a second. Any comments? Nope. Great. Ally, if you could take roll call, please.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Same.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samutzi?
Yes.
And Chairman Mercado.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have some echo, if whoever, thank you, can remove that. So a reminder to all of us that are on, maybe just keep the mute on in the background to reduce that, so that tonight, when staff presents this, they won't have any of those disturbances. Next, we'll move on to our public hearing, and tonight, we have our first item, which is an informational report on changes to housing regulations and processes, informational report outlining potential changes to the City of San Rafael's municipal code related to the inclusionary housing requirements, density bonus, appeals process, and other amendments to encourage development and streamline approvals, including changes related to the Design Review Board membership and procedures. So if I can have staff, please provide its report to the commission.
Thank you. And it looks like I need to be made a host so I can share the PowerPoint. Thank you. Let me get that pulled up. All right. Can you see my presentation screen, or are you seeing the PowerPoint application itself? Cool.
We can see the non-presentation mode. We can see the full PowerPoint application.
The tabs on the side.
Thank you. Let me stop that chair and try that again.
The same.
Yeah. How about that? We're good now? Perfect. All right. So this presentation is going to be performed part by myself and as well as Ally. I'm Ethan Guy. I'm the Principal Analyst for the Community Development Department. Part of what we're bringing forth is just a high-level informational report on potential amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code to encourage development and streamlining approvals. So because this is a long report, I wanted to give a brief little roadmap to kind of show you where we're going. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how we got here with the report itself, move into a discussion on the inclusionary housing piece, and then I'll pass it over to Ally to discuss the density bonus, the Design Review Board, and the amendments to the SRA, and see that we're discussing the informational report itself. And then we'll bring it back for a quick discussion and feedback, and we have a few framing comments to help kind of with that feedback itself. So in terms of the report background, the work on all these policies has been going on now for about two years, almost two years exactly, with our comprehensive report to City Council that was brought on August 20th, 2018. And as part of that report to City Council, staff was directed to follow up on four topics. So look at rental protections, short-term rentals, housing on an aging population, as well as challenges to approving and developing housing, which is where this informational report comes in. Staff then returned back to City Council for a report on those challenges to approving and developing housing on September 4th, 2019. And as part of that informational report, the purpose was really trying to identify those challenges, and that work included stakeholder interviews, research, gathering best practices, data collection, as well as identifying 11 challenges and 13 recommended measures and actions to be considered by the City Council. From there, we held a series of housing workshops and community meetings, and returned back to City Council on January 21st of this year, where City Council approved a housing work plan which outlined 15 policies to incentivize and streamline housing development. Six of those policies have been implemented to date. Five policies are what we're talking about today in this informational report. And so those are Policies 7 and 8, Policies 11, Policies 12, and Policy 15. There are two policies that are currently under development, Policies 9 and 10, which, once they're ready for consideration, will be brought back. So from there, we've had quite a bit of community engagement to get to this point, about two years' worth. We've had the work that went into the development of the housing work plan, but specific to this informational report, we also conducted a straw man draft proposal, stakeholder outreach. So what I mean by that is we put together an inclusionary housing policy to get feedback on, just to have something to have stakeholders react to. And with that proposal, we conducted one-on-one meetings with interested community stakeholders, but we also conducted presentations to the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative and the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Committee, which included representatives from the Marin Builders Association. Additionally, staff is also conducting a community survey that is currently underway, and we'll have those results when this informational report is presented to City Council. So moving on to the actual elements that were discussed in the informational report, the first up is our inclusionary housing ordinance. So in terms of background, right now, the City of San Rafael does have an existing inclusionary housing ordinance. As part of that ordinance, developers must make between 10% and 20% of new housing units affordable to lower-income households. And that really depends upon the size of the property, as well as a few other small elements, such as whether or not there's fractional units, whether or not the development, the level and depth of the affordability within the development itself. Additionally, one thing to flag about the inclusionary housing requirement is that San Rafael's primary tool to support affordable housing development within the city. Now, there are some pros and cons to having an inclusionary housing policy itself. Those pros include affordable units being built quickly, because they're being built as part of a market rate development. Additionally, inclusionary housing can provide some economic and racial integration, as well as the need, by providing the inclusionary housing units as part of a market rate development, no subsidy is needed to provide the affordable housing units from the city. However, there are a few cons to an inclusionary housing project. First, an inclusionary housing policy necessarily doesn't necessarily produce fewer units compared to 100% affordable housing development. So what I mean by that is, on an inclusionary housing program, you may only have 20% of low-market rate projects onsite, whereas if you were to build a project that's 100% affordable housing units, you're going to get more than 20%. Additionally, an inclusionary housing policy doesn't necessarily produce units for the extremely low-income households. Usually, inclusionary housing policies are really aimed at very low, low, and moderate income households, not extremely low-income households, which are very difficult to build housing for. Finally, inclusionary housing, some of the cons, it also may reduce project revenues, impacting the feasibility of certain projects, which can potentially restrict the production and raise the cost of developing that unit. So to kind of figure out what the city should be doing with the inclusionary housing policy, especially with that City Council direction, we had a white paper conducted to look and provide recommendations for what the city should do. So those recommendations included, specific to an inclusionary housing policy, that the city should consider providing a buy right and lose fee option, which is a payment made instead of providing a certain percentage of onsite units. Additionally, the city may want to consider Additionally, the city um may wanna consider altering the level of the inclusionary housing requirement, so potentially lowering the requirement or changing how the requirement is met. Another recommendation also included allowing developers to fulfill the inclusionary requirement more creatively and efficiently. So thinking about different ways that uh an inclusionary housing requirement might be met, that's not necessarily an onsite requirement. And then finally, setting a schedule to review and revise the inclusionary housing ordinance on a regular basis. And the rationale behind that is that an inclusionary housing policy works most efficiently when it's representing and reflecting market conditions. So you want to be able to periodically review and look at the inclusionary housing ordinance so that it is actually reflecting the market conditions. Additionally, as part of this white paper analysis, they also flagged a few best practices for most inclusionary housing policies. What they flagged is that most inclusionary housing policies contain two main elements. The first piece is a baseline requirement. And a baseline requirement is a percentage of below-market-rate units required to be provided onsite for all projects. So that's saying if the city requires twenty percent currently, we may want to reduce that to ten percent and say that all units have all projects have to provide ten percent onsite, no questions asked. However, an additional piece to that, in additional policies, they include what's called an additional requirement. So where you have this baseline onsite requirement that has to be met, an additional requirement allows developers several options to choose how they meet that additional requirement. So what does that look like? Those additional requirements may mean additional onsite units, so additional units, but providing them with the option to choose specific depth and breadth of affordability. So what I mean by that is depth is going to be the percentage of units, and the breadth of the affordability means the level of affordability. So you may be able to, you may provide an option for a developer to meet an additional onsite requirement, either through providing five percent additional onsite units at a lower-income level versus ten percent of units at a higher-income level. Additionally, additional requirements um may also provide ways to meet that requirement through the payment of an in-lufi, representing a certain percentage of the total units of a project. So let's say uh in-lufi might be allowed for up to ten percent of total units. That would mean that for a hundred-unit project, ten percent of total units would be a developer allowed to pay an in-lufi per unit for ten units. Additionally, additional requirements include off-site units, so a below-market-rate unit um might be provided at a site off-site. Usually, there's additional provisions within this, meaning the site needs to be nearby the onsite development. Uh there also needs to be similar economic benefit, as well as requesting requesting director approval. Finally, some some policies also provide a land conveyance. So a land conveyance would be uh the developer providing developable land to the city for future housing development. Now, again, like the off-site units, this must also provide a similar economic benefit and requires director approval. So an example of a land conveyance most recently has been the Bio-Marin Whistlestop Project. So Bio-Marin is being developed on one parcel, but as part of that development, they're providing land for Whistlestop to develop their affordable housing. So where that takes us is to our current policy proposal. The policy proposal that we developed, I really focuses on three scenarios. So rather than saying, here, here's a proposal for you to provide feedback on, we wanted to provide several different scenarios at different equivalencies, so that you can compare between the impacts of what a twenty percent onsite and a fifty percent onsite might look like. Now, part of our outreach to developers and to the public and community stakeholders was that whatever policy the city develops, we wanna make sure that we have a main goal, which is designing that policy so that the requirements are simple and transparent. Because developers wanna be able to know what exactly is that the city is requiring. So as I mentioned, we have three scenarios. The first is a twenty percent onsite BMR equivalent. So how that was developed is by looking at the financial equivalency of providing twenty percent below-market-rate units onsite. The second scenario was a fifteen percent onsite equivalency, so fifteen percent below-market-rate units onsite, and then finally, a ten percent onsite equivalency. Now, all scenarios include the below elements, which are from specifically those best practices. So there's a baseline requirement, an additional requirement. But we've also condensed the project size categories from the current inclusionary housing requirement, which is provided for three project sizes, so two to ten units, eleven to twenty units, and twenty-one-plus units, to two project sizes, two to fifteen units and sixteen-plus units. And the reason why we did that is because the city currently has a fractional unit requirement. So if a project, um when you do that ten percent or fifteen percent times the total units, if you get a fractional unit, um it causes issues with rounding. So by adding in the two to fifteen project category, we get to uh account for some of that issues with the potential fractional units and rounding issues. Finally, to help kind of compare what does the what do these scenarios mean, we provided some level of feasibility. So we looked at two main project prototypes. We looked at a low-rise unit, which has thirty-six units, and a mid-rise unit, which has seventy-two units. Additionally, we analyzed the the those prototypes for the additional onsite BMR units, so at the low and very low, or sorry, the low and moderate uh additional onsite requirements that I'll go through. And then finally, we determined if a project was feasible, if the profit that a project generates is greater than fifteen percent of the cost. And so as you can kind of see, we use a uh inclusionary housing calculator provided by the Grounded Solutions Network to kind of help us think through. And why we use that inclusionary housing calculator is they compile for cities lots of information regarding uh what the current market situation is like in strong markets, which the San Rafael is, as well as for the project types and those prototypes that we've used. So the first scenario that we provided is a twenty percent equivalent. Now, the twenty percent equivalent, that baseline requirement has a ten percent low-income requirement for two to fifteen units, and the reason why it's ten percent is again to address that fractional unit um issue that arises. And for the sixteen-plus units, it's five percent low-income and five percent very-low-income. And those are units that would have to be provided regardless onsite through the baseline requirement. And then for rental, the main difference between the sixteen units uh for the rental and the for-sale units is that um for all instances, the for-sale units i- is the next income category up. And the reason for that are some baseline requirements for entry into a for-sale project. So you need to be able to provide a certain level of income in order to qualify for most for-sale, below-market-rate ownership projects. So for every scenario that I talk about, there's gonna be just a tick up for all of the income levels because of those requirements that exist for for-sale project pro programs. So additionally, for the scenario one, we have four options. We have that onsite option that can be provided at the rental level for five percent very-low income, ten percent low-income, and fifteen percent moderate income. There is an in-lufi payment that would be allowed as a second option, that would be equivalent to ten percent of total units, and then there's the additional off-site and land conveyance options that I described. When we did the feasibility analysis for the low and very-low-income projects, both the low-rise and the mid-rise projects were not feasible at that fifteen percent uh profit on a cost. However, at the moderate-income level, low-rise and mid-rise were considered feasible. For scenario two, which is our fifteen percent below-market-rate equivalent, the baseline requirement stays the same as scenario one, but the differences are for the onsite requirement, we reduce that to five percent low-income for uh the onsite additional requirement as or an option for a ten percent moderate income onsite requirement. And then finally, we've also reduced the in-lufi payment from ten percent to five percent. And when we look at the feasibility analysis for this scenario, in the case of the low-income category for feasibility, the low-rise prototype is is feasible, but the mid-rise prototype is not feasible. At the moderate-income category for the onsite requirement, both the low-rise and the mid-rise are considered feasible. And finally, for scenario three, which is our ten percent equivalent, the changes here are in both baseline and the additional requirement. On the baseline, for the sixteen-plus units, we've reduced that onsite requirement from ten percent, that five percent low-income and five percent very-low-income, to solely a five percent low-income baseline requirement for both the rental and the for-sale. For the additional requirements for onsite, it also maintains that five percent low-income and that ten percent moderate income that was there in scenario two, as well as that five percent total in total unit in-lufi payment, which was also available in scenario two. Now, when you look at the feasibility, running it solely for the low-income category, both the low-rise and the mid-rise projects become feasible. We did not run it for the moderate-income category, mostly because when we ran it for that low income, it was already feasible. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ally to talk about the density bonus.
Thank you, Ethan. So as Ethan mentioned, I'm going to be doing the next three topics, um starting with density bonus, um the possible changes to the structure of the Design Review Board, and then the recommended zoning amendments that will serve to encourage development and streamline streamline approvals. So um starting with density bonus, just the background on density bonus is um that there have been a number of changes um at the state level um related to to housing production. And one of those changes include, or a number of those changes includes uh changes to the state density bonus law. And because our city's density bonus regulations were last updated in twenty-ten, um they don't currently reflect the state requirements, so this effort is really to kind of bring us up to speed on what is already required by the state. Um so um with that, I'll just go into the details of what is being proposed, as they pretty much provide the background of what is um what is required by the state. So what is being proposed for the amendments? Uh yeah, if you wanna go to the next slide on the policy proposal. Uh so what is being proposed is um there are six topic areas. Um the first area is that we're going to add language to establish a submittal and procedures requirements. Um this is something that's required by the state. Um the intent is to provide clarity and transparency um on what is needed to submit a successful density bonus application, so that an applicant um understands what they need and can decide whether they're ready to submit a density bonus application um and and be successful um with it. Um the the next uh um topic area is just changing all of our tables to be modified to align with the state density bonus percentages, as well as changes to the concessions and incentives tables. Um for example, um for one hundred percent affordable housing projects, we are now obligated to provide at least an eighty percent density bonus. Um changes to the uh to the concessions and incentives incentives tables would include clarifying that waivers for development standards are now allowable um without limitations if some if an applicant can demonstrate that a development standard is resulting in a physical barrier to development of their project. Um and then there are some changes to um the concessions sections that we'll I um discuss in a little bit. Um the other area topic area is that the definite the density bonus law expands the definition of specialized housing to include foster-use care um as a qualifying density bonus project, and it expands to concessions and incentives allowed for this type of housing project. Uh with a maximum of four concessions now allowed, previously, the maximum allowable incentives were um a max of three, and now with a supportive specialized housing project, you get an additional concession. Um again, there is no limit on the number of waivers that an applicant can request if they can demonstrate that this waiver would result in removing a barrier to housing development. Um the next topic area is related to one hundred percent affordable housing projects. Um the density bonus, state density bonus found law now requires or allows for a does a height bonus of up to thirty-three feet for projects that qualifies one hundred percent affordable. Um and again, they would also qualify for an additional incentive of four concessions rather than the maximum three that is um normally uh allowable. Um the next topic area is related to parking ratios. Our um parking ratios currently um are identified in our this our density bonus regulations, but additional uh parking ratios, um provisions or waivers are allowed for projects that are either a specialized or supportive housing project. And we saw that with Homeward Bound when it came in um the beginning of the year. Uh senior housing projects are also um allowed a additional parking reduction. Projects that are one hundred percent affordable housing are allowed an additional parking requirement or additional parking waiver. Um and then housing within a half-mile of major transit is also allowed an additional waiver, and those change on a sliding scale from anywhere from point-five parking spaces per unit or up to five uh point-five parking spaces per bedroom, depending on the mix of of uh type of housing and location proximity to transit. So um those would be brought into um our state, our own density bonus regulations. And then the last topic area is that um for projects, for non-residential projects that partner with affordable housing developers, um there is additional um allowances for development bonuses allowed for that that type of a development. And this is kind of, you know, this would be applicable to something like the Bio-Marin Project, where they partnered with the Whistlestop, and so this would allow for that flexibility in in a development bonus format. So that that concludes my uh discussion on density bonus, going into the Design Review Board Subcommittee um conversation. So the Design Review Board originally was um has served as an advisory body for design-related communication or recommendations to the Planning Commission and to City Council, but it has also served um to provide staff with some uh design solutions for some staff-level projects. Um the for the board was originally formed um um many years ago, and when it was formed, it uh it met in a very informal way. Um they basically sat in a round table and worked with applicants and designers and the board, and they would provide solutions um right up, you know, during the meeting. And, you know, there was, you know, people, board members would draw plans, designers would come up with solutions, they applicants went away and they knew what they were coming back with. Um um there were no notices provided for these meetings, and they didn't initially involve the public. However, the board has transformed in in recent years and probably a couple of decades, actually. Um it began moving into um the council chambers, a meeting in the council chambers. We now provide notification for planning, um similar to the Planning Commission meetings. Because this is a more formal setting, applicants are actually given guidance to come back with design changes, and often that leads to several review cycles, because applicants are trying to get their changes right, and a lot of the times they do, but sometimes they don't, either they misunderstand or or the changes don't turn out to be the way don't turn out the way the board envisioned. So um the other issue with this is that um it often leads to public, the public wanting to provide feedback that is more policy-focused rather than design-focused. And this leads to a lot of frustration for the public, but also for the board, because they're not able to provide a response to that, you know, those policy comments or questions. Um so as part of the January twenty-first um informational report to the City Council that Ethan had discussed earlier, um staff discussed some potential, some potential changes to the structure and role of the Design Review Board. Um and three potential options for the design review format that were discussed included um first eliminating the Design Review Board and structuring this Planning Commission to its membership, including one or two designers or architects that would provide the guidance, that design guidance to the Planning Commission. And and they would basically serve as the design experts on the on the commission. Um a second option is that uh idea of shifting the role of the Design Review Board to a more of a decision-making body. Currently, the, as I mentioned, the Design Review Board acts as an advisory body, making recommendations to the Planning Commission and City Council. Um but this would shift the their authority to a more decision-making body on environmental design review permits only. Um the Planning Commission would still continue to make decisions on land use, other land use. use applications as well as subdivisions, and would continue to provide recommendations on legislative matters. Then the third option was to appoint a design review board liaison that would review, you know, some of the smaller housing development proposals in lieu of having the full board have that review authority. In the event that, that this design review liaison felt that the design issues associated with a smaller project were too challenging or more complex, they could refer the application to the, the full design review board for, for consideration at a notice public meeting. So those were the three options that were presented in late January. And then about a month and a half later, we were ordered to shelter in place by the county of Marin and by the state. And in that process, we continued to have city council meetings in this kind of format, and we continued to have planning commission meetings, but the leadership made a decision that it was necessary to halt the meeting of our boards and committee meetings, committee members. And so all of the boards and committee meetings halted, but staff had relied so heavily on our design review board to provide design solutions that we decided that seeking out advice from a couple of, a couple of design review board members was a useful tool. And so we, we established a, a process where we would meet with them as a subcommittee, a subcommittee of the board. So there were two willing subcommittee members that were comprised of a licensed architect and landscape architect. In fact, Commissioner Sadi served as one of the landscape architects earlier on. We are very grateful for the input that she provided and that our landscape architect provided. This model has been working as a remote model as well. And it, but the way it works is that we, it includes staff members, it includes the design review board subcommittee, and includes the applicant with their design team. And it's a very informal, informal conversation that we have about the project. There's a little bit of more of an engagement like what we used to have. These aren't public meetings, but we, we continue to get that same support that we've always gotten from the board. This has worked well. We've received some positive feedback from applicants and the, and the public. They, we've had some successful projects that have gone through this process and have been brought to you. So it's, although it started out as a temporary fix during the shelter in place, it's, it's worked well. And so for that reason, we, we are bringing this forward to, to you as part of this report, as part of this informational report, as a concept that could be formalized permanently. So, so this, this designer view board subcommittee process would basically replace the full board. Again, it would include one licensed architect, one licensed landscape architect who would provide the professional advice to the design, professional advice on the design to the applicant and to the designers. The meetings would not be public, they would not be noticed, but applicants or the public would continue to be able to participate in the process through the planning commission process, if it's a planning commission action, or, you know, the other decision-making bodies like the zoning administrator or even staff level reviews. So it doesn't take away that public participation process, it just allows that design discussion to unfold in a more informal setting. So the next set of slides are, involve some changes to our, to the San Rafael municipal code that are focused on encouraging development and streamlining the approval process. The city council has given direction to staff to look for solutions to encourage development. The housing work plan that Ethan mentioned was an opportunity to vet some of those ideas with the city council, and the plan was well received, the working, the housing work plan was well received, and the council provided guidance to staff to continue to look for ways to find amendments or solutions to encourage development and streamline approvals. So I'm going to go over some of these amendments that we have identified now. There are more that are likely to come as we continue to kind of sift through our zoning code and our, and through our policies. So you may see some in future, future presentations. So I'll start with the Hillside exceptions process. The Hillside Development Overlay District was enacted 1992. It serves of, serves as an overlay to Hillside residential development areas. Projects within this district are required to comply with certain development standards. Applicants can request exceptions to that, to the requirements. The Hillside exception process goes direct, goes to the city council with recommendations by the planning commission. This is very unusual because the planning commission typically, normally makes, makes decisions on exceptions and variances. So taking one, one type of exception that all the way to the city council is just an unusual process. So staff does continue to discourage applicants from requesting exceptions, but it, the, it's a, it's more appropriate for the planning commission to be the, delegated the authority to review these types of applications. The decision of the planning commission is always appealable to the city council, but this, you know, kind of downgrading of the exception process would promote a streamlined, streamlined review process and would be consistent with the process that we're already using and is already in place for other exceptions and variances. The next item is related to the height bonus, and this is related to the density bonus discussion that I just provided, that for housing that, for, for development projects that provide 100% affordable housing, a 33-foot height bonus is allowable. And if it's located within a half mile of a major transit stop, so we're just bringing that into our height bonus section of our code, just for clarity and transparency. The next topic is related to small lot developments. Our zoning code establishes limits on development of lots under 5,000 square feet in area that are also zoned for multifamily development. And even though they are zoned for multifamily development, these housing, these lots are restricted, so they can't develop at their fully designated densities. In 2018, when the city brought forward, when staff brought forward a, a set of zoning code amendments, staff was asked to, by the city council to explore, but the possibility of eliminating that language completely as it precludes developments of lots at their designated density. So staff is now proposing amendments to the municipal code that was served to remove this, this barrier and encourage development of all lots at their full potential, at their designated density. And lastly, there, the current appeals process, there is no structure right now for how we schedule appeals when there's an appeal filed. And so that, what that does is it leads to kind of an awkward balancing of the appellant's rights and the applicant's rights and trying to find the right date to schedule an appeals hearing on. It's not ideal. It really puts a burden on staff to try to create that balance. And so it's necessary to provide some sort of clarity and certainty to applicants and appellant when those decisions might be presented to the city council. So staff has developed an amendment to streamline the scheduling and action of appeals. So this amendment would basically establish scheduling procedures and would clarify, also clarify public noticing requirements. So the street, the, the purpose of this is to basically streamline the timeframe for the process of scheduling. Scheduling an appeal for and holding a public hearing can add, you know, anywhere from two to four months to a planning review process because the scheduling of an appeal and hearing is open to coordination. And like I said, it can be very awkward. So it would, it would create a timeframe for reviewing an appeal. It would also provide certainty on that date so applicants and appellant can have, can be prepared knowing when they are going to be scheduled for an appeal, when that appeal is filed. So that concludes my, my portion of the presentation. I'll go ahead and send it back to Ethan.
Thanks, Ally. So we just threw a lot at you. In terms of next steps, I, we're tentatively planning on going to the city council with this report on September 8th. And city council has asked for planning commission feedback to be incorporated in that informational report that goes to city council. And then once we're at city council, staff will be asking for their feedback as well as further direction. So to kind of help with the feedback that we're hoping to, to get from the planning commission tonight, we prepared a few framing questions. You don't have to stick to these framing questions, but it's mostly just to kind of express some of the areas that we have, we have questions for, for you. So in terms of inclusionary housing, I, the main question really is, should the city allow developers an option to pay in in Luffy instead of providing onsite units or a portion of onsite units? Kind of a follow-up to that question then, is should the additional requirements, as we outlined them in scenarios one, two, and three, be designed to incentivize the payment of an in-Luffy, which may increase the feasibility of a project and can be leveraged for additional affordable housing, but it also lowers the mixed income housing onsite versus incentivizing an additional onsite BMR, which are highly needed, they get built faster, but may make projects less feasible. As it relates to the design review advisory committee that Ally discussed, the main question is, should the city formalize this process by, and dissolve this design review board process as we currently know it? And then finally, those series of density bonus and amendments to the San Rafael municipal code, were there any concerns or comments to those changes? So with that, that's it. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen and throw it back to you.
I'll start off with a question. So with the inclusionary housing proposal, or I, my question is really, which proposal would yield to encourage more affordable units, whether that was onsite or offsite? Have you guys figured that out when you, you put together the scenarios?
Good question. And to kind of put a caveat on my response, it's very difficult to project out what the impact on developable units will be, mostly because of all the things that go into whether or not a project moves forward. That's why we tried to focus more on feasibility, just because there's going to be these projects here or there. So I, there's, there's kind of two main schools of thought currently on which scenarios might move a project more affordable. The one is that having a lower inclusionary requirement may incentivize more overall development by which you may have higher net units because you're just providing more, you have more feasible projects and therefore more units. The other school of thought is that a higher inclusionary requirement means that you may have less projects feasible, but in each one of those projects, you're going to have a higher number of affordable units. So in terms of which one is specific to, is going to provide more additional units, that's pretty difficult. I would say the more projects that become feasible, especially if, if there are concerns about going into a recession or concerns about the high cost of, of developing right now, more feasibility is never a bad thing.
Yeah, and then in Luffy, there was a reference in the report referencing like Seattle's, their guidelines, and that seemed to like allow for just affordable developments by, by like accumulating all the Lufis. So could you expand on that, how you see that applying to San Rafael?
Absolutely. So what that's referencing is, there's been quite a bit of analysis on how much can cities leverage with their in-Lufis. So the analysis that was conducted in Seattle, they found for every $1 the city spent through their trust fund in an in-Luffy, so an Luffy would go into the city's trust fund. For every dollar that the city spends, spent from their trust fund, they were able to leverage $3 in state and federal financing. So that includes things like low income housing tax credits or other state and federal programs that require the city to put up a small amount of dollars for them to be eligible for those larger projects. So when it comes to the state of California, there's several very large housing programs that, that exist at the state level that were approved in both 2017 and 2018 that require, even if it's a small amount of city match or trust fund dollars in order to be eligible. But if you're eligible, the likelihood of you getting funding from those projects is highly, highly, highly likely.
I have some, I have some, some feedback and some thoughts because I'd, I've been doing a lot of reading, both literature as well as a number of the bills that are passed down from the state. And I think one of the, one of the things that I think about a lot is in terms of the two competing interests that we might have. One where we, one where we want to build much more housing, just from a societal perspective, and be able to ensure that people who work here will be able to live here. The other side of the coin is, does the city have the ability from a financial perspective to purposes that is obligated to, to that new development? So I think that the, the specific, I don't know if you want to call it tension, but the specific tension that might exist between having the directive to build more affordable housing, basically as much as possible, and this idea of collecting in-Lufis for developers that, that can't, and so instead will, will pay sort of a blood fee. I think that it's kind of a necessary tension. And I think that one of the, one of the things that, you know, we need to be considerate of from a city perspective is that this needs to, like, you, you cannot build housing by decree, right? There are private entities that will come and build the housing or, you know, provide the actual construction or provide the actual financing for these units to actually come up. So there needs to be, there still needs to be a strong market incentive for, for developers to come and actually build. So I think that it makes sense that we do want more, more housing units. I am of the school, Ethan had kind of mentioned the two schools there, I'm of the school that we just need more units in general. And that, you know, by delegating, by delegating a certain number of, of houses for specific income brackets, you actually end up still inflating the cost of housing for everybody else. So I think to a certain degree, I, I would prefer that we build as many units as possible, just in aggregate, so incentivize builders to come here and build. And then if necessary, the city itself can collect funds, be able to leverage those funds, and be able to be a sponsor in a project down the line. So that's, that's sort of my, my thought or feedback around the in-Lu system and how I think that it can actually be, can be very effective. And I think it's probably, from a financial, financial feasibility standpoint, from the city's perspective, is probably the best option for the city, given that we're heading into a climate where, you know, tax revenues, specifically sales tax revenues might be down right now, and we need to be able to actually finance all of the things that we want to be able to do to, to, to help run the city.
Makes sense. I have a comment.
Yeah, so I have a question slash comment. So I work for the county of Marin, and I'm not in the affordable housing program that handles these issues, but what I know is that it's very, very challenging for the county to find a parcel where they can actually use these funds that they have collected, similar to the ones we're discussing. And they, they simply have not been successful in building affordable housing with these collected fees. And I think that's one of the challenges of Marin County, we're a built-out county. And as we all know, every time you're talking about, about building affordable housing, it becomes this huge controversial discussion for everyone. Discussion for everyone. So my worry about the in Luffy is this, that we're going to have this amount of money and then we just can't build affordable housing. And I was wondering. Can the, can the, the fees collected by the city be used? In partnership with developers to actually make, make some of these projects feasible? And that's. Do you understand my question?
That's a great question, yeah.
We're, we're moving into a world, I think, from the public sector perspective that unless we do these partnerships. We're not leaving the status quo, where where the public sector is. Is just not competing to build these kinds of projects. So do you foresee this being a partnership with the public funds and the developers in? And I agree with Commissioner Samutzi that I, I support development, I, I want people to come and build these units, but at the same time is. Can we partner with them as a public entity and and build more units on the low market rate?
Then it's, it's a great question and I may start at the thousand foot view and then kind of go down a little bit. So to to kind of reframe the question a little bit. I almost exclusively how a city uses the trust fund dollars is in partnership with a developer. Almost one hundred percent, that's usually how those projects are used. And the reason for that is because the city won't, won't be able to build housing, we're not developers, we're not in that, the housing building business.
Yeah.
And and so what what we do is we we either partner with an affordable housing developer. Or we sometimes you partner with a market rate developer who's interested in providing additional affordable housing. And you help either subsidize the cost of the market rate projects or you do what's called gap financing. And so what gap financing is, is that an affordable housing developer is able to provide funds at, let's say it's. They have five million dollars that they can get a bank loan from. But they, the project's going to cost ten million dollars, so they need to fill a five million dollar gap. Now, some of that money will come from state programs, some of that money will come from federal programs or things called low income housing tax credits. But inevitably, there's going to be a leftover remaining amount that needs to be covered. So that's where a trust fund comes in, is that the city is able to kind of start and kind of fill that gap. So historically, what's been an issue behind a lot of affordable housing development is they're playing by very similar rules as a market rate developer. However, in in the state of California, that's changed quite a bit over the last few years, so things like streamlining. And quicker approvals have lowered the cost of building for affordable housing. Because they're able to get their approvals faster and they're able to get to the building stage. And so what that's done is it's made it a little bit easier, even if it's not. Everything that needs to happen for affordable housing development, it's made it just a little bit easier for affordable housing developers to build out. And the the additional point that that you kind of mentioned as well is that Marin County is built out. Most of these developments, especially with affordable housing development, is what's called infill development. So it's happening on sites that already have projects. And what the benefit of that is, is that you're able to kind of streamline a lot, a lot of the approvals already. Because there's already planning, there's already land use that are on those sites. So there only being infill development in San Rafael is not necessarily a hindrance to the development of affordable housing.
So I had a question, I actually had a chance to play through, play around with the inclusionary housing calculator, it's a pretty fancy tool. Played out a couple scenarios myself, I won't get into the mechanics of it, but I am curious. It did default to a ten percent rate for feasibility as an assumption. The assumption made here is fifteen percent, I'm not commenting if it's right or wrong, but could you step us through for the sake of the public? How fifty percent was arrived at as that based on assumption for feasibility?
So the the main reason for that is having conversations with developers. So there's a lot that goes into that fifteen percent, it's called fifteen percent yield on cost, is the, is the kind of the high level term. There's lots of different ways that it turns feasibility, cap rates, profit on cost, that yield on cost. So we had several conversations, both in the development of the white paper. As well as when we took that straw man proposal to several developers and and advocates to kind of say, does this make sense? Here are our assumptions and we had initially started off with that ten percent assumption. Now, the feedback that we got is that ten percent is accurate in some areas of the city, that it may be accurate. Where areas where you're, you're likely to see a higher overall return, even if the percentage is lower, so you may. It may be harder to build or more cost more to build, but you'll still see a higher number. But in other parts of the city, a twenty percent is more realistic. So honestly, it was just splitting the difference to kind of hit on that fifteen and and quite honestly. With the the cost of land, with the cost of labor, with the cost of construction right now, twenty percent is probably more realistic. Given, given the the current situation.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question about, well, so so the state mandate, the the density bonus of thirty three feet. Is that, that supersedes any land use like R one? So a neighborhood, you can, I can destroy my house and build a fifty foot multi. If it was reduced housing, is that correct?
With an affordable housing project that is meeting the densities of the zoning district. And yes, they would be allowed to build up to thirty, that thirty three foot as a bonus.
So it was.
I'm not necessarily saying in the single family, in the single family districts, that's, that's not what we're talking about. It would be, for example, in the downtown area, if. We've had a hundred percent affordable housing proposal, someone could. Request that thirty three foot height bonus and we would be obligated to offer that. Because of their location and because of the level of affordability.
But could, could that happen in a R one residential neighborhood? Or?
No, not currently, it doesn't supersede the densities that are allowed. It's only if it's a hundred percent, well, that's a good question, actually. If you had a development proposal that were. Where they were all single family lots and they were all a hundred percent affordable, could that be? A thirty three foot height bonus, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It's like a ten, ten lot development with. With all one hundred percent affordable. I guess realistically speaking, that could possibly happen. It still will need to be within a half a mile of transit.
Right.
And and the question would be, would somebody really ask for a sixty six foot single family residence?
Yeah, no, I, I, I get you, I just was curious if that superseded the land use designation. Really good report, I mean. Mr. Guy and staff, it is, it was interesting to read, it's very thoughtful and in the in Loo fees. Yeah, I, if it, if it encourages developers to tack on affordable housing, that seems to be much more realistic. Because I was thinking, running through my mind in San Rafael, where would this? Say we collected, you know, four million dollars in in developer fees. There are many locations that'd be too happy putting a hundred percent affordable housing unit in in San Rafael. So I mean, I'm just, if if that's, if that's the way you, you can leverage the money for more money and get a developer to incorporate into an existing. Project, it seems like that would be ideal. But I think again, the more, the more flexibility we're giving developers, the better, because I think we all do want more housing. We understand that the situation and the uncertainty of the future, the next coming years with municipalities. How much money there will be is also interesting.
I have a comment along those lines. I like the idea of reducing the. Below market rate housing requirement percentage to make. Development to spur development, essentially. The one thing I'm worried about, one of the things I'm worried about is with in Loo fees. Do you think that we would see developments that. It's like pay those fees to obviously avoid putting below market rate housing into the development? And then we see sort of like a. A segmentation, a segregation of neighborhoods that will have. Developments that are for wealthy people, where those in Loo fees have been paid. And no, no below market rate housing and then. To the commissioner's point before, other areas of the city that have dense below market rate housing. I, I'd like to try to avoid that, I think that, you know, San Rafael has some of that, but it typically has. A pretty good level of socio economic integration and I'd like to try to. You know, continue to promote that sort of. Segments of society living together.
It's a good question and there's kind of two areas where I see the potential response to it. The first area is, that's part of the, the reason why there's a need to maintain a baseline requirement. Is because that baseline requirement really does kind of help make sure that you still have mixed income and ingrained communities. The second piece to that is that there's been quite a bit of analysis since inclusionary housing policies have become more. More common throughout, throughout the nation on that question of integration. Are you going to create concentrations of poverty by not making sure that everybody is living in a mixed income community? So what a lot of that analysis finds is that. Yes, if you're building large towers that are separate from the rest of the community, you're going to have that issues. But you can still build a, an affordable housing project that's one hundred percent, right next to a one hundred percent market rate project. And still have the same social impact than if that project was combined together. So what they looked at was kind of what are the, the educational outcomes, what are the financial outcomes of those communities? And if you look at places like New York, not trying to compare San Rafael to New York City. But you have these kind of developments of a large affordable housing project right next to a large market rate project. And more or less you're, you're finding very similar outcomes. So that is kind of a lot of where the analysis is looking right now. That, the, the big caveat to this though, is that if you do that and you do try to fund a lot of a hundred percent affordable housing projects. You, you, you do really need to focus on making sure that whatever that affordable housing project is. That that it has operational expenses built in, that there is a, a system in place to make sure that the long term viability of the project. Is, is maintained and the reason for that is so that we avoid mistakes of the past. Where we build projects that that often kind of come up when we talk about. Public housing or affordable housing, large scale projects like Prue and Igo, Cabrini Greens. We've made tremendous progress in the last fifty to sixty years since those projects to make sure that we're having the same social impact in the same social outcome sense.
If I can just chime in on that, this is Rafi, I wanted to share that, the, the premise that you kind of articulated. Of, you know, not trying to concentrate on was one of the major tenants of our current inclusionary housing ordinance and how it was designed is. We wanted to see each development throughout the community. If there was a project, we wanted to see the affordable units built within that project and spaced out through that, that project rather than. Grouped and transferred to another site and concentrated. So that's how we've operated under that model for the last twenty, thirty years. And I think we still generally agree with that, it's just I think the, these changes are really trying to find a little bit more flexibility for developers in. How to still have a project that makes financial sense for them to build while yet still providing some affordability levels.
I had, I had a question, it runs a little bit counter to the notion of increasing inventory, which I, I would. Say I fully support for the reasons that have been expressed so far. However, I, I'm curious, like, as far as the city of San Rafael's obligation to regional. Housing needs assessment levels for different income categories. It's, it seems like we're proposing things that are somewhat flat for different income categories. I know that there are some levels of income that we're not even able to address, especially with the extremely low category. Are we under any obligation to make sure that we're trying to lean harder toward the, the lower income levels or are we? You know, I guess that's my question as far as our obligation to RENA.
Yeah, um, Hallie, you want to go?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can just, I'm really, so we, we're obligated to provide, to make an effort to accommodate. The, all, you know. Development at all levels of affordability, so if we're not, right now, we're not, we don't see a penalty. I don't know that that will continue. The, the level of affordability that we're always low on is within the extremely low categories. We did have recently a development that is meeting that, meeting that requirement, but there's, that's only thirty two units. But it's, but. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a constant battle, I don't, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Ethan?
Yeah, the, the one thing I, I'd add is that. As it relates to extremely low income housing, the biggest issue there is, is because the rents are lower, you have a larger gap that needs to be filled. And that, that financial gap is much lower, is much bigger, which makes it harder to develop that project. And and that's not just San Rafael, that is everywhere. The, the second piece I had is that there's, there's also been quite a few changes to how RENA is applied to cities. So that twenty seventeen and twenty eight legislative housing bills that I keep referring to. Made some pretty major changes to the RENA cycle. And so the next RENA update that we have, that we're actually currently in the process of doing the allocation. And will get next year, early next year. There's going to be additional requirements on the city to make sure that we are planning and providing that housing. So it's, it's going to be a pretty big change and cities that don't plan and provide that housing. There may be additional penalties that penalties that can apply to the city.
You know, I had, I had just one quick thought and I don't know Aldo if you want to. To, to jump in if you can hear, but the one quick thought I had was around. In the, the use of in Loo funds, I know that the focus is primarily on new development. But I wondered the possibility of also leveraging those funds to actually just make investments for redevelopment. So purchasing existing properties and then potentially converting them to be more below market rate.
That's a great question, it actually goes back to some of what Commissioner Davinson said. And that is, part of how cities have also been using their trust fund dollars has been what's called acquisition and rehab. So acquiring properties and rehabilitating those properties to make them. Make them more affordable or to buy down the affordability of properties. And so that, that is very much an act, a, a process that that gets developed. And the benefit of that is that actually per unit cost of acquisition rehab is much lower than the cost of building and construction.
Yeah, and so on that note, because we saw in the scenarios, there's a breakdown of renters versus homes for purchase. I'm wondering if there's been any partnership or discussions of partnerships with any lending agencies? Or either, either lending agencies for mortgages or down payment assistance, for example. So like shared, shared equity, for example, in order to actually assist. Assist people in these groups to actually purchase the properties, the one reason I ask is that. I think some of the concern from the community may also come from the fact that. Especially in the very lower income areas for rentals, there tends to be a greater level of transience. And sort of instability within the neighborhoods and I think that's largely what the, the NIMBY concern is with that. Ownership changes that quite a bit because then it's, it's, it's still somebody that's owning, but more importantly, it's also building equity. In an area that, you know, we were seeing appreciate, so there's a, there's a bit more a sense of like being a. A financial stakeholder for communities that otherwise would have been shut out. And I know that from, from that standpoint, it would also seem interesting to. To see how in Loo funds could potentially be leveraged in order to help people purchase as well who are in lower income categories.
Yeah, again, it's a good question and again, there's two parts to it, so the first part is that. There's quite a few state programs that were developed in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen to help first time home buyers and low income home buyers to. Really, the barrier to entry for a lot of homeownership is the down payment. I mean, putting together the amount for the down payment to provide. so providing assistance to do a down payment for a home itself. The second is that, part of when you are describing kind of a shared equity model, the most common version of that is called a community land trust. And so there's quite a few jurisdictions, and actually Marin County has several community land trusts that exist, mostly in West Marin. So Community Land Action Marin Clam is one of the big ones. But Sonoma has one, and Oakland has several, they're everywhere, really. And the idea is that ownership of the land is shared, and that when there is a change in ownership, the affordability is maintained and the equity is shared amongst the home itself and everybody that's within this, this community land trust. Now, the main issue there is that you need to be able to set up a community land trust. And often, these are non-governmental organizations, and we currently don't have a community land trust operating in San Rafael. That's not to say that there won't be one, but at this given moment, there isn't one.
Okay. And I think one other commissioner has a question before we turn it to the public.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I have another question about the in lieu fee. I was wondering, Ethan or Hallie, did you, did part of your analysis include confirmation that the in lieu fees were substantial enough to fund affordable housing? You know, is it, basically, did you confirm with affordable housing developers that there would be enough funds in the in lieu fee fund to support development in this area? I understand that, obviously, with development costs being extremely high, that's something I would be concerned about.
Yeah, it's a good question. And it's, whether or not there's enough funds is kind of contingent on several factors, right? Making sure that there's enough people paying into the fund to kind of keep the fund balance large enough, so that when a project comes down, comes down the pipeline, that there's funding available to help that project become feasible. So right now, our in lieu fee is set at about $343,000 per unit. And we're in the process of conducting a NEXUS study, which is a legal requirement for us to increase that in lieu fee. And that's hopefully to be done in next year, probably late next year, which would allow us the legal ability to increase it from $343,000 to whatever the NEXUS study says we're legally allowed to do. So that's one. The second piece is that generally, when a project comes down and is looking for a gap financing, the trust fund isn't the only place where they're getting that trust fund funding. So some projects may only need a $750,000 gap from the city to become feasible, which is just two units, right? However, other projects may need a significantly larger trust fund application or trust fund funding in order to become feasible. And so it really is this spectrum. But generally, if you're able to maintain it, and I say this as a very large generalization, most cities try to shoot for between a one and a $2 million baseline balance, just in case we have one of those larger projects that comes up.
Aldo, are you able to, are you able to talk, Aldo?
I think you're on mute.
How about now? Yeah. So my Zoom isn't working, so I'm on the phone as well. So I may be working now if I disappear, I don't know. It's that kind of day. I just wanted to, so thank you, everyone. And I, again, not to take time off, I think we haven't gone to open this up for public comment. So I'd like to bring this back with a public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the commission again to allow everyone to provide more thoughts or input before we maybe want to take a motion on this. So if staff could help us open this up for the public, please.
Thank you. Yes, so if you're participating in my conference call, wish to speak, press star nine now. I do see that there's one person who has raised their hand. I'll also request any public comments through the YouTube Live chat be made now. Make sure to include the words "public comment" in all caps and start off your comment. So while we wait to see if there's any YouTube Live chat comments, I'm going to open up to the first person on the phone line.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney. I'm the Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. And we submitted a letter, which hopefully you've all studiously considered in your comments. We are totally supportive of the city's efforts to incentivize more affordable housing. So, you know, of the inclusionary housing scenarios that have been discussed, it seems to us that scenario two, which is the 15% onsite equivalency, seems the most promising. It encourages more housing production by relaxing overall requirements, while it also creates a path for more units that would be affordable to moderate income residents. This is the so-called missing middle in the housing market. And such units both meet a growing need in our community and also make housing developments more feasible by providing better returns to developers. However, it's very important that the in lieu payment option in that, in that particular scenario be raised to 10% versus the 5% that's currently in the proposal. That's necessary in order to incentivize more affordable units more quickly onsite. And that, of course, furthers the basic purpose of inclusionary housing, which is to produce a more economically integrated San Rafael. And for the same reason, that same 10% equivalency should apply also to off-site units and land conveyances. The staff report shows that the 10% level of in lieu payments is economically feasible from a development standpoint, if you look at the scenario one feasibility study. And with the merger of current inclusionary categories into the single category over 15 units, whereas it used to be, you know, 15 units and then another step up to 20 units, it seems, the use of this standard seems appropriate. Feasibility is really the key metric that we should be paying attention to here, not an imposed symmetry of monetary value between the various options in this particular category. So, you know, I think just by looking at it from that strict monetary standpoint, it undercuts, again, the public purposes that are at the core of inclusionary housing, which is a creation of an economically integrated community, and also the delivery of housing supply as quickly as possible. We also urge the city to adjust the in lieu payments for both housing, and also, very importantly, for commercial developments, both to track current construction costs, but also to, in the case of the commercial developments, do with the goal of better balancing jobs and housing. So it could be that those are somewhat different, different fees. And then finally, we would suggest, because of the complexity of this and the magnitude of the change in economic conditions right now, that we, that the city take a look at this every year for the next several years after implementation to see how it's going and see if it can be adjusted to make it as effective as possible in achieving the housing goals that we all have, particularly as we come up onto a rewrite of the housing element over the next couple of years. Also, we're a little concerned about the Canale District, which has, you know, which is somewhat threatened by gentrification at the moment, and we're somewhat concerned that reducing the inclusionary requirements there could lead to a less affordable neighborhood. So thank you very much for your considerations.
So we have one other person on the phone line, but I have not seen that they have raised their hand. So the other person on the phone line, if you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to let us know. If not, I will, we have received one comment on YouTube Live. This is from Joanne Webster, CEO of the San Rafael Chamber. "We are all interested in encouraging more workforce housing, but we must make the choices feasible, or projects will not get built. This program can be a pilot to spur development until we reach a threshold of total units and then look at it again. Welcome to the new commissioners. We look forward to meeting with you and getting to know you better. Thank you." And there are no other YouTube Live chat comments. And I do not see any other phone-in comments that want to speak.
Commissioner, or Chairman Mercado, we can't hear.
How about now?
Perfect.
Okay, so I can see you, but I can't hear you. So I'm on the phone. And I am, yeah. So I think we will close the public comment component of the hearing and bring this back to the commission. Just a kind of bit of a reminder, tonight, this is information, and staff is really looking for some clear guidance and direction and thoughts. And I think what I've heard so far has been really helpful. But as we take this now with the public comment, looking for really anything that we can either get some consensus on or poignant and direct guidance that the staff can take this, I guess, with respect to the update for the city council. So a couple of options on how we want to do that. One is whether we want, I can do a roll call. People can talk either generally, or we can look at each section that was raised tonight in the presentation and take those one by one. I think what would maybe work is if we take each section, each commissioner gets a chance to comment on that, and then we'll close that section up, go to the next section, and then maybe do a bit of closing at the end, generally, overall. To me, that seems like that would hopefully give staff as much direction as possible. So let me pull up the report.
Chairman Mercado, if you'd like, I could outline the different topic areas.
That'd be great, Hallie. Yeah, I was just going to say if we want to start with inclusionary housing, but if you want to do a quick overview survey, can get their notes ready and kind of see what's coming down the roadmap, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was going to offer that too. So inclusionary housing, we have the density bonus discussion, possible changes to the structure of the design review board, and then the recommended changes on zoning code amendments to encourage development, streamline approvals. And those are, include the small lot discussion. It includes the height bonus provisions. It includes the appeals process and the hillside exceptions, downgrading that to a planning commission level.
Okay, great. So let's start with inclusionary housing. To the extent, I'm not gonna, I don't think I'm going to take a roll call and make each commissioner, a lot of you spoke, and I will be honest, I was in some technical jumbo land in between it, so I heard some, but not all. So to the extent that there's inclusionary housing requirement, some of you may have provided your feedback on it. If anybody wants to jump in, right now is your chance.
I'll just reiterate my two questions as more official comments. You know, I'd love to see the staff clarify how we will avoid having essentially a lack of integration between income levels as a result of the in lieu fee. And also ensure that, as we discussed, that the in lieu fee is high enough to actually promote and fund affordable housing. Those are my key points.
Thank you. Any other?
I'll jump in. Guy, I think it was consensus, we all feel we want more housing. We want to give developers some flexibility in terms of making the projects viable. And in terms of scenarios, I guess I'm, I'm liking scenario two, 10% in lieu. But again, if there's some, you know, if there's some, something that's going to get a project built, that would be kind of key to me. What else? Hallie, do we, is there a reason, I thought the last, that last section in terms of the municipal code, aren't those all state mandated? What we'll be discussing? I mean, the 33-foot height bonus and stuff like that, isn't that all done?
Yeah, so the density bonus regulations, those are all, those are all state mandate. So, you know, if there were any questions, comments that you wanted to provide on those, yeah. But they are state mandates, or we're just simply bringing those over. There were, the hillside exceptions process was not, the small lot development is not, the appeals process is not.
Oh, so, well, okay, I mean, all right, then, that being the case, then I'm, I'm fine with all the staff recommendations on those three issues. Mr. Guy, you're still here. If I'm a developer and I've got like 17, 18 units, and I look at this and say, okay, if I only go 15 units, I don't have to include any affordable housing component? I get to keep that in lieu fee, I get to keep, is that the way it reads? I mean, is that literally hard and fast?
Yes and no. There are definitely going to be some kind of fringe cases where they're going to be between 15 and 16 units, and may decide to go with the 15% or 15 units. That being said, there still is a requirement at the 15 units. So what they'll be doing internally is thinking, well, does that 16th unit provide the necessary profit? What, what is more likely the case is you're going to see projects that are at 10 units trying to decide if they need to go to 20. And that's going to kind of be that trade-off.
Gotcha. Thank you. Hallie, do we want to wait to talk about planning DRB? We want that later?
Yes, I think we're going down the list, inclusionary, and then Chairman Mercado will go down, yeah.
All right, it's all good.
So I'll go next, but I'll ask a question first. When, when a non-residential project comes in front of us, we always have questions about whether or not they should contribute to this affordable housing trust. And it's because of the generation of jobs and the jobs created are normally for the very low income earners, and it seems like we don't have anything in place currently. Is this something that can be incorporated into the discussion, or is it just solely residential developments?
So it's a very good question. And what you're describing is the commercial linkage fee. And right now, we do have a commercial linkage fee, but it is lower than what is, we might be able to allow. For us to increase that, though, we need to conduct a new NEXUS study. That's a state requirement for us to be able to increase that linkage fee. We have a consultant working on that right now, but that, we're doing that in conjunction with the county. That's not going to be ready for consideration until next year. So when we do have that, though, we'll be able to reconsider what that fee is. Can we increase that fee, all that? But we, there's a legal requirement that we have to meet.
And just for clarification, I think the issue that Commissioner Davidson was speaking about was, the last couple of years, we've had some struggles with residential assisted living type facilities, and whether those are residential from an affordable housing standpoint or commercial, and whether the linkage fee, commercial linkage fee, which is how we've applied it, was adequate enough for the amount of lower-paying jobs that they're creating. was adequate enough for the amount of, uh, lower paying jobs that they're creating.
And, and then going back to the in lieu fees, so if I'm a developer, piggybacking on Commissioner Lubramsky's scenario. If I'm a developer, at what point do I engage with the city to fi- to see if I can possibly create this partnership and you help me and I'll increase the number of units built?
So generally, there's, there's not, um, uh, that level of an explicit relationship, um, when, when, when it comes to the development like that. Oftentimes, there, there's a larger conversation about what is allowed, um, and I'll let Ally jump in here too. What, what, what is allowed in terms of the land use, um, pretty much everything else. I, where the inclusionary housing discussion really kind of comes in before they come to the city. When they're trying to figure out what they want, what their application is to the city. Uh, they're, they're analyzing what's the financial impact of this inclusionary housing, what, what, how many units can I provide? Once the fee is paid to the city, it's, it's a completely separate process. The city then is, is working with other developers, housing developers, um, and that, that process is constant. Um, that, that, that process is kind of always happening whenever we have a developer or affordable housing developer coming in. Us helping identify projects, that, that's always happening.
Yeah, and I just, the only thing I would add is that currently the process is that we are expecting, um, developers to provide the, the housing onsite. And what this is doing, what Ethan has, uh, presented to you tonight is, um, different oper- different options for developers. And so that, that conversation may start happening earlier on if, if there's an interest in, in providing the in lieu fee versus all of the affordable onsite, so, um, but, but like Ethan said, it's like an ongoing conversation that's occurring through the process.
Ally, would it be appropriate to ask you how the, like, Lock-Lowman project fits into this discussion? Or is that, I mean, I don't want to, no, secrets or anything?
Ethan probably, could probably provide more information on that than I can.
That's a real, a real world example, for instance.
Real world example, and, um, wh- what I'd say is that I, the Lock-Lowman did, project did have already that onsite requirement. Um, where they came to us was when they were having difficulty getting the project, um, to continue to move forward. And there was a provision within their below market rate agreement that we were able to utilize for that project. So while the, the Lock-Lowman agreement does not set precedent or anything like that, it is an example of a, a project just needing, uh, a little bit of a change in their requirements in order to become feasible for, for the foreseeable future. I do want to caution though that the Lock-Lowman project was very unique in, in that it, it had been around for a while, there's been lots of iterations, there's, there's a marina onsite. There are lots of different things that were active, but it, but it does kind of show where eh, there is some flexibility that can be provided to make a project.
Well, can you, can you, can you share with me why, what conditions changed to made it, make it not feasible? Was it construction costs alone? Is prices just still going up, or do you know?
Yeah, construction costs are some of them. Uh, when, when the project was initially approved, um, we were in a much different economic situation than we are now, um, in terms of both just land and, and material costs. Um, that was one of the big ones. Uh, the, the other provision, just a kind of flag, is that, uh, what they paid per unit for their buyout was about double what are existing in lieu fees. So, um, i- i- it was significantly more than our current in lieu fee.
Thank you.
Uh, so, um, of all the discussion here, and I've appreciated all the comments said previously. It feels like moving toward increasing in lieu fee, there were enough questions around how to manage the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in ways to, um, achieve an outcome of more, of more housing inventory and specifically affordable housing. Um, I'd be, I, I, I guess I would request from staff, are there ways that we can, in the report, expand upon what those knobs and levers are as far as management of that trust fund? Because it does, it feels like there's, there are a lot of options. I guess I would be curious to see if we are able to uh, more consistently, uh, using le- in lieu, uh, fees, um, if there's, can be adjudicating ways to, uh, I think achieve the outcomes that we're all talking about here.
Yeah, i- i- it's, it's a great question, and, um, wh- what I'd say is that one of those policies that was implemented through our housing work plan was actually policies and guidelines for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Those didn't exist, um, until recently. So, uh, we, we do have a very thorough report that we can attach, that, that kind of outlines kind of how we go about that process.
Thank you.
So I just, I'll wrap up my comments regarding this topic in just expressing my, my personal feeling is that I want the in lieu fee to be the last resort because I don't want to lose the opportunity to integrate. And I think, um, we have an opportunity to develop this below market rate housing everywhere that where housing is being developed, otherwise we do have the potential to, let's just pay the in lieu fee and we'll, we'll build it somewhere else and it becomes his pocket. That's not welcome by anyone. So I'll just leave it at that. My feeling is like, let's try to build as many below market rates, uh, units as possible with any proposal. And then last resort would be the in lieu fee.
So I think a couple of thoughts, a couple of thoughts on my end. I think the, the pieces that really stick to me, one is just ensuring that we also have a, a solid base of homeownership that we're creating, particularly in folks that are, you know, what is it? Of, of AMI or whatever the, the, the category designations. I think it's important because, a- again, I, I think not just about the new housing requirements, sort of the need for new housing, but also about, again, A, the city's capacity to provide services. So there needs to be some, there needs to be some additional revenue to the city that comes. Um, that's where, you know, again, I, I look at property taxes as a big one. And that's where I'm, I'm really, uh, I'm, I'm, I would say that the, the biggest comment that I have when looking at the different scenarios is focusing on expanding homeownership specifically. Because I think that, again, uh, it's not just about housing, but it's also about creating a, a new set of stakeholders in the community. Um, you know, we look representation of renters versus homeowners, like it's, it's not even close. And so I think the other piece that I'm concerned about is we're, we're rushing for the sake of sort of a specific virtue or political virtue towards a solution. But we don't really, A, we don't really have a means of empowering people now that we've created a ton of low income units that are here. Number two, especially considering the overall economic climate, um, we also have to be considerate, considerate, considerate of and be very mindful of, you know, what is the real development opportunity from the standpoint of a developer? Like if we, if we were to create standards that, um, are too difficult to build anything, then, you know, we, I, I would say again, below market rate units are a, a lagging indicator of development in general. So if you're not seeing healthy levels of development period, you're not going to see healthy levels of below market rate, because what that says is that market rate rents aren't be, like, people aren't able to afford market rate rents. And so like the job market does not sustain, you know, this type of, of units. So again, I just want to be very mindful of sort of the current economic moment in terms of the requirements that we set. Because we also want to make sure that from a financial perspective, it's going to be even feasible. Because again, um, below market rate units don't get built if market rate units, if it's not feasible for market rate units to be built in general. So that's, that's something just to be, to be very cognizant of. And then in terms of the in lieu fees, um, like I said, I think the governance is going to be, uh, crucial, sort of what the mandate is for, for, for how those funds are spent. I would encourage creative avenues of, uh, of, of looking at how to make units available. You know, again, even purchasing market rate units and making them available at subsidized rates or at lower rates is another, another thing. Because again, I'm thinking about the construction costs and all the other things associated with the current economic moment, about how difficult it might be to actually build our way to the, to the available, um, below market rate units that are there.
Anyone else? I think everybody's provided their thoughts. Thank you. Uh, I, I don't want, I'll echo what everybody said. I would think one of the issues that, uh, to me is really critical is the commercial linkage. Being the environment we're in right now, there's likely going to be a lot of commercial turnover. And so what is the extent that that linkage applies? I know you're doing the Nexus study. But I would also highlight, does the Nexus study look at what is the actual commercial component that in lieu fees can, can be triggered on? So is it that, is it a use permit? Is it a rebuild? Is it new build? Um, I think you're gonna have a lot of turnover right now throughout the country probably. And so figuring out where those fees could be triggered, maybe an interesting, uh, analysis if it's not in the Nexus study yet. I think we should move on. Uh, anyone else? I think we can move on to the density bonus discussion.
I would have one comment, which is, and maybe this also applies to set, to the last section, but I'll, I'll see if it does here. Is that in addition to sort of the, the spill down from the state, I would also throw out there that we should consider removing parking minimums as well. Um, for, especially for, if this is sort of additional onsite density for, for an existing unit. Um, I think that that encourages use of public transit. Um, again, our, our biggest goal from an environmental impact is, is VMT. And so I think that, you know, we, if you look citywide, we have an overabundance of parking supply. Obviously, in, in specific areas, you know, it's not as well distributed. But I think that forcing developers to account for additional parking, given sort of the overall parking situation and how we want to drive more towards public transit, that's something that we should, we should consider with, uh, in addition to what we have with the, uh, with the density bonuses.
I'll just add that I have no comment, considering most of the, this is just getting us up to speed with the current laws that the state is mandating. Um, and I, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to add.
Any other commissioners? Uh, I can jump in. I think for the density bonus, one of the issues that I would recommend is to not align too much with the current state proposals. I think density bonus tied into ADUs and, uh, increasing use of building envelopes is going to be something that's ongoing and changing. That's going to tie into funding sources, how you can maximize your developable lots. It's going to tie into a lot of the CEQA updates that are happening. So I, I think too, one of the public comments earlier of keeping this flexible to either be updated or at least have this kind of check in, maybe every year or periodically is going to be critical, in particular to the density bonus. I think if the state considers that what it's done on some of these, uh, by right exemptions it's made, uh, we're going to see more of this. And I just wouldn't want to see us having to constantly update it to align with changing standards without really getting a chance to analyze it. Anyone else before we move on to the design review subcommittee? Okay. Then I think we can move on to formalized design review subcommittee. Do any of the commissioners have a?
Yeah, I, yeah, I got some. Um, Ally, is there, is there, um, is this, is there a problem we're trying to solve by dissolving or changing the DRB? Is it, well, I mean, i- is it problematic for developers? Is it, what problem we trying to solve?
Yeah, so one of the, um, the items that we looked at, um, a couple of years ago, actually, Ethan could probably speak to this a little more, but what we discovered in doing surveys and interviews with developers and, um, was, one of the issues was getting stuck in the design review process and the time that it takes to get from the time they submit an application to finally getting a decision. Um, and so, um, I had mentioned earlier that, you know, the current process prior to the COVID shelter in place order, we were, um, receiving applications that were going to the design review board. We would get, um, the design review board would provide comments to the applicants. The applicants would then come back with some changes, sometimes multiple rounds of changes. And so I, that's what started the conversation. Um, so yes, but the, essentially to answer your question, the, the issue has been the delays in, that occurred during the design review process.
Gotcha. Um, I, I'll speak myself that I think their service is invaluable to the, the success of a lot of projects. I mean, if we were in the weeds early on with some of these projects, it would take them even longer. Now, I understand that now it, it kind of became codified and formalized and all that stuff. Maybe draw it back to just sitting in the conference table with five people who are, who want to be, want to be their, um, citizens and go through the project in a maybe less formal way. But I think, I think that what the work they do is invaluable. I think the time they spend is, is incredibly helpful for me. Um, and I, I would hate to see it dissolved. Um, I think it's a great breeding ground for people who then come onto the commission. Um, I think it's, it's just, there are a whole lot of pluses that would outlay, uh, that would, would overcome any, any of the delays. Because I, I would bet dimes to donuts that those same problems we would have, if we were, what they were doing, it would just be in front of us instead of in front of them. So I mean, I, if it, I would have no problem with it being more informal, um, whatever, you know, beers and donuts at the, on the conference table or something like that. But I, I, I would, I would personally like to see the, the makeup stay roughly the same. And its charge be what it is now. I mean, they, they do a great job, so that's, that's just my thought.
And just to, um, to be clear, this, the proposal that, that is being provided as a part of this informational report isn't that we would dissolve, that the design review board would dissolve completely. It was just, it would just be changing the makeup of the board to, um, more of a subcommittee, um, informal.
Yeah, that's like two or three people or whatever. Yeah, I mean, I, again, it's, it's my opinion, but I think, um, if it, if it ain't broke, you know, don't fix it.
Um, I'll comment on it. I was recently on the design review board and part of the subcommittee. Um, I agree with, um, Commissioner Lumbarsky, I'm gonna mess up your name, your last name. Um, that there is a lot of input that's provided by the design review board that yields in projects that are better integrated into the fabric of Sanderfell. And the things that are being looked out for are far different than the planning commission or any other body. And, um, I think potentially at the time that some of these considerations were taking place, there may have been more delays, um, but at least in the last year and with the current board, I don't feel like, um, the delays have been substantial. I think the board has done their best to try to get projects approved and provide comments and give staff, uh, the ability to work with the applicant directly and resolve, um, any issues without having to come back to the board. Um, that said, uh, there was a lot of success this spring with the subcommittee. Um, because I think what it did was return to probably the initial intent of the board, which was, which is really like more of a round table and a discussion, even though that was not in person. And, um, the feedback, there was more back and forth on the feedback, but there are some bigger projects, like, you know, we look at Biomarin or even the whistle stop housing. Um, those projects, um, went through more than one round. And I think with, we came out on the other side better because of it. And, um, whether or not that's through a subcommittee or, um, with the current state of the board, I think we can list pros and cons of each. Um, but having a formalized process for larger projects like that, I think are valuable. Um, if we take out those larger projects, I think the subcommittees work great. So I think that's something for, um, staff and, um, guy, you know, guy to consider in terms of, um, how they approach the city council. That, that's what I have for that.
Yeah, this is, uh, just really quick, I, I want to piggyback on that. I, I think, um, something that I didn't see in the, in the proposal that maybe should be explored is, um, can you do a hybrid of some sort? Can you retain? Can you retain jurisdiction of the design review board for certain projects that have certain criteria? But then have the jurisdiction assigned over to the planning commission as part of their approval for simpler projects where the design isn't such a critical issue. And I, I think design is, I think by removing the due process component of the design review board and keeping it more of an ad hoc, you are not providing the public what they want, which many times is that detailed review of the design. So I, I would either consider a hybrid of some sort if you can to allow jurisdiction to be allocated between the other boards and commissions, depending on the project. Uh, or keep it formal and streamline the formality somehow, but continuing to do the, uh, the, uh, public, uh, notice and involvement.
I agree. Yeah, the one thing I, I definitely am in favor of having smaller projects, you know, be for a smaller group of subcommittee as you're recommending. But, you know, I'm concerned that with the larger, more important projects, a little bit of public input, it caused some problems. So I love the idea of a hybrid approach where we could allow for um, public comment and, and some level of public input for the more significant projects.
I guess what I'll say is similar. With the intent of streamlining these types of projects, I totally understand that one of the recommendations would be to eliminate the D R B because I see it as like streamlined. It's providing affordability. Um, I do not think that the planning commission is the forum to uh, voice all of these design issues and, you know, the, the services that the D R B provides. So this ad hoc, um, committee seems to me like the solution because you, you're not stacking a process that's going to be multi-month. As if, if there are comments and then the applicant has to come back. We, we have heard horror stories from some applicants that went back to the D R B like five times and then they came back to the planning commission another five times. So in that sense, I, I really feel like some of these projects shouldn't have to go through that, especially when when affordability is, is what's at the table and it's, it's deciding whether to build it fifteen versus twenty or, and, and if, every time you go to one of these processes, it's all, it's very costly from the project proponents. So I can totally see that, um, that this ad hoc, just informal get comments on design, it's, it's perfect for me, I think.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments brief. Um, I'll echo, um, sentiments said prior, which is, I think that it does make sense for certain threshold projects uh, to have a more formal and, uh, public, uh, re- review or in, in a, in a public setting. So I'll keep my comments short just to say, um, I appreciate the streamlining and let's come up with maybe a threshold, um, for some larger projects for a formal D R B review.
I'll just quickly add that, you know, if we can do to, you know, sort of shorten the review process and the public comment process, Commissioner Davidson's point, I think would be extremely useful.
Any other commissioners on the D R B discussion? I'm not sure if I'm hearing a, a consensus on this one. Are we, the staff, do you feel like you've got some clarity as to some bullet points to take away or do you have specific questions or thoughts as to how we could further help this item itself?
I feel like there's somewhat of a consensus. I feel like, um, what I, what I'm hearing from everybody is that there is an interest to keeping a more formal um, design review, um, process for larger projects that would really benefit from that larger group, but possibly have a less formal process that could be applied to um, other smaller projects and maybe establishing a threshold for what that would be, would maybe be the focus. Does that seem like?
Ali, I would add that like, um, you know, there's a lot of residential projects that are smaller in scale that tip off D R B review. And I know there's a staff level design review um, process that doesn't involve the D R B and, you know, and looking at those thresholds. And maybe that some of those projects then like that those threshold projects go down to like to staff as well. So it's eliminating some projects from the D R B review. And I think, I can think of some cases where, um, it seemed as though like these projects were small enough to, um, to, to not go in front of the D R B.
I would just add that, you know, I actually like the, you know, the subcommittee where you have fewer people. Did you mention that regarding landscape architect? Okay, that idea even for larger projects, because then you don't have this sort of decision committee uh, problem happening where you have a lot of flaw, you know, within the committee. Uh, since there are only two people who are, um, making a decision. But the thing that gave me pause earlier was this, the idea that you wouldn't have public comment for those larger projects. So personally, I'd be in favor of a hybrid approach where you have those actual projects, those larger projects that have public comment, but still they only um, already have to be reviewed by that subcommittee, that those two people. I think personally, I think that would go a long way to streamline the process. Given what I read about some of the, um, sort of outlaw that happens with the community that can cost delays.
Okay, great. Okay. Ali, did you have any questions to follow up on?
And I'm just kind of thinking, yeah, I'm thinking about how, what that might look like, but, um, that's interesting.
Yeah. And the one thing I can share is over my few years here, um, it's sometimes difficult to, um, to put a quantification or some kind of tangible number around what's a small project and will not garner any public concern or input versus a large project. A lot of times it just depends on the project. I've seen small, uh, small additions to a house, um, take, you know, bring a hundred people out to a, to a D R B meeting. And I've seen large fifty thousand square foot commercial buildings not have any public interest. Um, so a lot of it is what is based on the design itself and how good of a design it is, first of all. And then second is how controversial it is based on design or sometimes what we see is a lot of, um, non-design matters that, uh, you know, generate controversy. So that's going to be the hard part for us to find criteria that actually works to address the comments that we've heard and creating this hybrid solution. So that's where we're going to struggle a little bit, I, I can assume.
But they'll, the public will have an opportunity to speak about these issues that didn't go through the formal design review board at the planning meetings anyway. So there will be a a public opportunity, right, for expression?
And this is one of the things we struggle with in different communities, do it different ways. I'm not sure there's a perfect solution because when you have two separate bodies, it becomes partly the chicken or the egg. Um, our community has chosen, uh, to take design matters first and make sure the design looks good before taking it to the decision-making body on the land use stuff. That works well, but for the general public who's not involved day to day in a public planning process, that sometimes doesn't make sense that the design review board is only looking at this thing while the plan commission is technically looking at this thing. They just know it's a public meeting and they have concerns or comments or issues and they want to express them. So it is, it can be confusing and frustrating for the public. And it can also be frustrating for the designer view board when they're hearing comments about things that they can't really, um, comment on. So that's the, one of the other reasons behind this is trying to, you know, address that issue. Like I said, some other communities do it inversely where, uh, the, the box in a sense is approved first. The, the land use matters, the bulk mass, and then the final skin is done after the fact. Again, that has its pros and cons too, and, um, I'm not sure that's a, any, any better than how we've done it here. It's just a different way of looking at it. So, um, those are all the factors that have gone into this, uh, over the years. The, you know, the, these discussions about our design review process and whether it works good or not.
The other thing I would add with that is that, you know, we're, we're trying to address, you know, something that's been, that was, just speaking to Commissioner Sadi, that was kind of an issue. And that I agree with some of the more recent, um, D R B meetings, that there's been a little bit more um, attention to trying to keep, give the applicants more direction and more guidance, better guidance. Um, so that they're not coming back and forth. But I'm just wondering if the, the real conversation becomes the thresholds for design review and where those are and who's actually reviewing these applications. And so that, that may be something that we look at. I mentioned earlier that we're, we're going to continue to look at our, um, municipal code to see if there are ways, other places where we can amend to help streamline and encourage housing production. So maybe those are, that's one of those areas that we look at and reevaluate whether, um, who is the reviewing body and, um.
Well, could, could we consider like a pilot program that for the next few, uh, they, we discuss those issues at the planning commission meeting and see how it goes? So that we can get it to deciding the thresholds. So if it's affordable housing project, it's all discussed at the planning commission level.
That's, that's something we could look at. Yeah, we could look into.
And, and, and Rafi, you know, it, it, that's why I call it a pilot program because I mean, as planning commer, commissioners were not that ignorant on the D R B issues. And we'll see how it plays out. And if it backfires, it's a pilot program, lessons learned and we reconvene. But I, I really feel that we have to be a little more aggressive into addressing the streamlining component, and I see this as an opportunity. So in essence, I guess it's eliminating the D R B, but it just sounds harsh. That's because I do appreciate the work and that goes on at the D R B. But I, I would recommend something like a pilot program. And if it's an affordable housing project, then it comes to the planning commission and we address both.
And the only thing I would add to that is that the pilot program, there is a pilot program by default right now. Um, because we're not meeting as a, the R B is not meeting as a full board. Um, and so that pilot is actually essentially happening. Um.
And we're, I think we're at the point where we're going to start seeing some of those projects actually that have gone through the subcommittee, come to the planning commission or a zoning administrator public hearing. And, you know, we will, we will be seeing what sort of, um, issues or design-related matters come up in the next, you know, probably months to three months. Some of those will probably make it through the process to get to a hearing. And that'll give us some indication of how, how it works, this pilot program that we've been in during the pandemic.
I'd like to add that, um, limiting the public comment to the planning commission is a good idea because the D R B does get a lot of comments that are not related to design. Most of the people, most of the public uses the D R B as a forum to initiate their first, um, public support or, um, their first public opposition to a project. And we're not really seeing, we're not hearing com, we were not hearing comments that were design-related. They were either like parking-related or, you know, zoning-related. And, and then more, you know, economically driven or socially driven. There weren't, um, there weren't really design-related comments. So I think that's, um, that in terms of, you know, Commissioner Davidson's streamlining, I think that's, that, that's something that we should consider.
And, and we're only talking about these types of projects, the affordable housing. So I, anyways, I'm gonna stop.
If we, if we disband the D R B, I don't want to have all these, you know, livid public coming at me about Costco or whistle stop or Target because that's going to add another meeting. I don't see how you, see, we, you know, you, D R B weeds out about half the people before I tend to get to us. So I'm just thinking, it's, it's, I mean, in normal times, if we stay like this for another year, the public will probably forget we even exist. So I mean, uh, we'll, we'll see.
But, but we're not talking about the Costcos or the Targets. We're talking about the affordable housing projects only.
How do you, how do you, how do you reassemble the D R B if it's disbanded? If it doesn't, we, we're talking about a small, you know, two or three people. I understand that. Sitting around a conference table, I think that's very effective, very good. But once you, maybe I'm not understanding, I, I, if, if we're getting rid of it, you said we want to get rid of it, then what do we do for bigger projects? How do we, you know, vet those?
Just to clarify, I want to make sure we're clear on one thing. I don't think we're talking, I don't want to, I want to make sure we're not conflating two things here. We're talking about streamline D R B irrespective of inclusionary housing. This is a totally, totally separate issue.
Correct. Um, so the one thing I would just to respond to your question, Commissioner Lubbersky, is that, um, the, with the proposal that you have as part of this packet, the D R B subcommittee, working as an advisory committee of two members, would still be reviewing the larger projects. It would still be providing design solutions to those projects. So you would be, when those projects came, come to you, um, you know, in this, in this scenario, that they would already have been, that they would already have gone through a design review process and you would be receiving the recommendation by the, by that subcommittee. So your, your focus, your, your task would still be the same, that you would be still focusing on policy questions. And with the knowledge that you have received a recommendation by the design review board subcommittee.
But, but there wouldn't be public input during that?
Correct.
Okay. I, I don't know if that's a good idea.
And, and to kind of follow up on, on what I already said, uh, another way to potentially frame the subcommittee process is that you, you're just making the D R B smaller and making it informal rather than a public hearing. Um, so it'd be a smaller D R B without the, the public hearing noticing requirements. Um, that would exist. Would that be another way to frame it, Ali?
Yeah, right.
I, I support that.
And, uh, one addition to it is just, uh, I, 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 there was one more piece that I meant to, to add. One way that you could potentially get to the question of public comment would be providing an opportunity for people to submit written comments before an initial D R B, um, review. So say, D R B is meeting, submit your comments today. And you know, you would be able to consider that, but it wouldn't be a public hearing. So there wouldn't be public comment at the public hearing, but there'd be an opportunity to submit related comments.
I had a quick question about that. How does the public find out about, uh, projects in a sense of what the project is going to look like?
We provide a notification to, um, property owners and renters within three hundred feet. Or, yeah, three hundred feet of the project site. And then we also for development projects that have external changes or additions or whether there's an, where, where there's a new, um, development proposal. Um, we also notice, post a notice on the site.
System remain in place, process remain in place?
Under, under, yeah. Um, well, it, it wouldn't be with the, the change in the subcommittee, it would be a less formal, not noticed project or review. with the the change in the subcommittee, it would be a less formal, not noticed project or review. But 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 the planning commission or whatever decision making body um that review will still be noticed. And so there will still be an opportunity for comment at that level during the normal planning review process. So there would still be.
If I were a neighbor and someone were doing something, I would want to know before it appeared before the planning commission. That's all.
Ellie, are there other advisory committees like this within development?
Um, within city?
Yeah.
We have um we have other committees. I just don't know how they are run. I don't think we provide public notification on any of the others, Rafi, that you know of. Do you?
No.
No.
Not for development related.
Yeah. Okay. Ellie, other questions or thoughts, any more guidance we can give you? I think there's a little bit of a there's a few of us who have concerns with taking the more advisory nonformal and then some who seem like there's really a a strong or to enhance the streamline, it's very important to do that. Uh I think that this one's a little bit mixed still.
Yeah, I think this one's more mixed. Just after the second round of comments, it feels like there might be um kind of a mix of of concerns. Um but I also heard some ideas on, you know, what else we can do to look at our code and think about streamlining. So that part is helpful and we'll relay that information to the city council.
Yeah, I think that was a great idea. I mean, I think if you can find objective criteria, either within the code or some of the new um state requirements that come out, that can create a really nice bright line for which projects can uh would qualify for this less, you know, sort of formal review. Um. Okay, so we go on to the next, the amendments.
Chair Mercado, can I make one final request? So I had I had read about this and it just came to me. Um, maybe one thing staff can consider is, and I don't want to add one more option, but one thing that I think is working for Maraga that they consolidated design review function into the planning commission there. Um, it was more of a hybrid model. I don't know if that ended up in the options exactly, but um they did that in the last year. I don't know if that was something that was examined, just that could work here.
All right, I have one more comment too. Um, it's just that I think it would be valuable to promote the use of design guidelines. So so as to avoid sort of controversial designs whenever possible. Thank you.
Ellie, thoughts? Is there any more comments or questions you have on this one before we move on? Are we ready to go to the next section?
I think so.
So so I've thought about about this, about this last section. Um, I know that the the overall heading is is more to do with um uh ways that we can sort of create some expedite expedited processes um where where necessary and sort of allowing for things like buy right. Um, buy right passage of projects. And one thing that I had sensed to to Rafi and Ellie months ago was as I did a review of AB one O one and sort of more specified objecting, objective planning standards was to also think about um what are ways, and this is kind of tied to somewhat of the discussion of of the design review board in terms of creating some set of objective standards um that would allow us to very easily, you know, go through a decision tree about, you know, what needs, what can, what can be fast tracked and what needs further review. Um, I think there are objective standards on the design side of things, but then I'd also raised the issue of having objective standards with regards to just general compliance with, say, the the San Rafael general plan. Just again, with sort of my earlier concern about making sure that we're not spamming property that or spanning projects that don't really align with the overall direction that we want to move the city. Um, even, you know, and again, all the different requirements are tight are are tight rope walks. But we still have sort of a specific direction that we want to move towards as a as a community in terms of goals, you know. We want the schools to keep getting better. We want more businesses to come downtown, et cetera. So, you know, there are certain things that we need to make sure that um developments from an environmental impact perspective can contribute to that. And if they don't, you know, we have some set of standards that may flag that. And, you know, along with the the in lieu um payments to the city trust fund, I think that it would be good to also have some sort of similar type of system for for projects in general um to help them sort of move along that fast track where if there are sort of issues from an objective standpoint that come up um that have to do with an environmental impact, that there's some sort of rubric that we can use as a measure of sort of in lieu either payments or in lieu community benefit activities or actions that the developer can take um to to kind of help mitigate um those potential negative environmental impacts that are very easy to spot. Um, and I I brought the example of the the city of Emeryville um who had implemented a a scheme like this um very successfully. If you've seen sort of how that city is has transformed itself over the last twenty years. Now, I don't think that, you know, San Rafael, the community desires that level of density, but I think that there's there are some lessons learned that we can take from that kind of approach in terms of um helping us make sure that projects that meet certain requirements don't get tied up with having a lot of reviews. I'm very, very mindful of the project that we saw a couple of sessions ago about the about the restaurant, I think it was on Fourth Street, that had to basically wait a year and actually had to forego a lot of income you know, during the during the the early shutdowns from this pandemic as a result of having basically being held up over really just wanting to expand their existing space by by an extra room inside their property. Um, so being able to to fast track certain items is good, being able to accept some community benefit mitigation from a developer would also be helpful. So some kind of um some kind of rubric for that would be, I think, um, something to consider um in terms of coming up with some additional ways of of fast tracking things that need to be fast tracked.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I think in particular to section B, these streamline approvals. If you're nodding your head, I can't see you, so just jump on in. Sorry.
This is Eli. I would just say, most of this seems very pragmatic to me. Uh, I'm the newcomer, so uh I might be missing something, but my initial read on this was pragmatism. If I found it.
John, I didn't hear you very well. Is that you agree?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Any other commissioners with thoughts or comments on this section?
I would.
I can jump in. Oh, go ahead.
That is pretty straightforward and I tend to agree with um the recommendations.
Yeah, I agree. I think in in what Commissioner Shingy was saying earlier, that to me, this aligns with that idea. Um, if the overall idea is to streamline and enhance certain projects, this really is the spirit of doing that. This is kind of weeding out what seems to be like criteria and issues that existed previously that either through changing development, uses, or just infill of the city, these aren't issues anymore. Uh, or, you know, new jurisdictions and uh entitlements taken over by the state or whatever it may be. I mean, it just doesn't seem like these are necessary. I do think for the small law, it's clarity on that's critical. If we're getting into a situation where we're only looking at a limited capacity of what our developable laws are out there, I, to me, that seems like what we should focus in on. Tonight's conversation was a lot about affordable housing and developers and how they can handle really these larger projects, which I think is one spectrum of it. But knowing the conditions that we're in right now, and we don't really know what financing will look like, we don't know where developers will land. I think equally looking at small lots to see what can be done to simplify their ability to build out, their ability to do um really expansion of their housing component is critical as well. So um getting clarity on that, I think, was really critical. I'll be honest, though, I when I read that section, the fourteen sixteen three hundred, I I didn't really understand it initially.
Yeah, that's actually um the the reason that this even came up in the first place was that we were bringing that section to the city council for an amendment because it was difficult to understand. And so the recommendation at that time was we're trying to change the language so that so that it's easier to understand. And at that point, the city council said, why do we even have this? And so um that's so, yeah, so that's why we we're back now with a recommendation to remove the small lot restrictions.
Good.
I agree. No, no further comments for me.
It's a hu- huge improvement.
So I think we've gone through each subsection, and I know that when these are really for staff to get some guidance as to what they're going to do next, which is kind of revise this and prepare to go. I believe to the city council, um I would like to bring this back sort of more generally to to the commission as to whether there's anything overarching comments or statements that anyone would like to provide um really the team that they can consider for a little bit of guidance. So what I can do then is if you don't have anything else, so free, but maybe I will just start calling commissioners out and give you this last opportunity to provide sort of a consensus of what your thoughts are or if there's anything that you may have missed during any of the previous sections. So I'll start uh with the Q I have, which is Commissioner Davidson.
And what are you seeking comments on? Again, on the three topics?
This is a general consensus, yeah, over the entirety of what we just discussed, whether there was anything that you missed uh that you wanted to go back on to clarify, or generally whether uh this is something that you like the direction that this uh overall report is going. So it's really kind of just a conclusion of generally your overarching comments.
Yeah, so I think I expressed my thoughts on these uh subjects, but I guess the the one thing I'm just not educated on is this, the purpose and the handling of the in lieu fees. And 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 just just the the partnership with the private sector, I guess I maybe it exists, I just don't know about it, but it seems to me just from my experience at the county and here, I'm on the sidelines of that issue. It's not like I'm embedded in those programs. But it would seem to me that there's education that can be done in in encouraging more partnerships. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, so directionally, um I'm in favor of where these uh four areas went uh in this informational report. So thank you, staff, for your thoughtfulness. Um, I found the inclusionary housing requirement uh uh um an excellent um analysis. I I think I I would echo Commissioner Davidson's um consideration, maybe in a different direction around in the fee and and how the trust is used. I do think that um there are probably enough knobs and dials there to achieve um outcomes aligned with the general plan. Um, so I I think um obviously the attachment of the of the guidelines is good, but I think that I think let's uh make sure we're able to use the knobs in a way that that are appropriate. Density bonus, I thought was outstanding. The DRB subcommittee, obviously, I I think I would characterize that as is a more kind of um there and back again on that issue. So I thought that was I don't have any comment on that further. And then uh the final section, the amendments and streamlined um recommendations, I thought were pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Luberski?
Um, yeah, I think anything we can do to increase housing and affordable housing at that, we got to give more, give um staff more tools and developers maybe more tools um to develop uh housing and affordable housing at that. And if a couple of these different ideas um work and 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 make that happen, I think all the better. Um I we're in Lou fees, I think they're great, but I think, again, they've got to be used for to kind of push existing projects or projects built onsite. I don't see us getting, you know, eight million dollars and building some type of a, there just would be, I don't know where we put it. So um I think if we can incorporate it into projects and maybe reduce the cost of those projects to make it more um attractive for developers, that would be the thing. Um DRB, I think we they should do the the Pledge of Allegiance before their meetings. They should, we should have them and they should do the Pledge of Allegiance because we use that pledge allegiance. Now, I understand it would if it'd make things faster, I get you. But I just, I don't want to see the Costco people and the Whistle Stop people coming first time at me. I want to come someone first. Um, and last thing, if we can lower that density bone, the height down to like twenty feet. I know it's thirty three, but I think if we do it right, just short tape measure, something like that, maybe. But no, I think you got um Ethan, you're 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 a doll to still be here. I I usually they check out after they present, but you are still here and you get props for that. Um, yeah, so staff, you did a wonderful job. Um, and yeah, so.
That's it. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Pravatoli?
Just muting myself. Yeah, I want to commend the planning uh staff for all their work. Uh, I think that this is um really going in the in the correct direction. I really like it. Um, for the to reduce the PMR percentage requirements in order to spread development and also harmonize the um political requirements with state requirements. So developers know um just what the requirements are in order to expedite their process and um reduce the time associated with development and permitting and all those questions um being answered and answered. Um, the one concern I've I've mentioned a couple of times is I a little fearful that in lieu fees will be abused um by developers who will um essentially come in and create those fees in order to build um very expensive housing for high income folks. And that will see uh essentially a polarization in some neighborhoods. And so I think it is important that uh we've we've probably that we can bear that in mind. I'd like to see San Rafael, uh, you know, continue to be uh pretty well uh and create a community from an economic perspective. I know my name, if it is, is Arlinda. And to, you know, uh, that sort of uh characteristic in the city.
Great, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair, Sunutzi?
Yeah, I would say that um broadly, um the things that I really prioritize or want to emphasize are um moving us in a in a position where San Rafael is a is an attractive place for developers to build. Because as I said before, I mean, if we're going to be really, really honest about the market reality, um it's that affordable units uh are a lagging indicator of the overall ability to build in the housing market and that in order to sort of And that in order to sort of buck the market, in other words, if the market is deciding not to build in San Rafael, but we still want to build a ton of um below market rates that, you know, are stretching sort of the um stretching the seams of feasibility, um, then we need to have a large war chest behind us. And so that's where, you know, if we do decide to go the route of, you know, regardless of what the market says in terms of viability and and developer appetite, if we still want to make this sort of a number one priority to have, you know, X volume of 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 below market rate units, then, you know, we need to be aggressive at in creative about being able to get the funds for the city to be a significant player in helping grease the wheels from a financial perspective to make these projects viable. Um, so that's that's really the, just just so that we walk into this with eyes wide open and not paint ourselves in a corner ideologically without having a practical financial way of ensuring that those goals are something that that are met without compromising the the overall city's ability to provide jobs for the people that we're that we're bringing, if that makes sense. Um, so I think that's 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 one thing to keep in mind. And then the other piece is, you know, again, in theme of making this a place that's attractive to develop across the board, um, is to really look at objective standards for um creating additional ways that we can speed up the development process. So if we know that a developer ticks a bunch of different box that are boxes that are based on a really defined set of objective standards, then we can be comfortable about fast tracking them and and shortening the amount of time and money that they have to spend to to go through this planning process. Again, that will, if if we can do that, you know, relative to other cities, relative to other counties, then developers are going to look to San Rafael as a place to build, period. And if it's lucrative to build, and that's the thing, is that the more units get built here, um, the the more, the more uh that becomes a self reinforcing cycle. And then that becomes a a good problem to have in terms of, okay, the city needs to step in to to subsidize basically the cost of land. That's a different discussion altogether, be more of a fixed cost than having to deal with the backend construction and not having a guarantee of of income coming in to to make up for the cost of construction. So again, if you look at that from the standpoint of percentage of cost, you know, if we if we can do things to help make the fixed costs, the bigger components, I of land, um, which is a result of more developers coming, then I think that's the direction we need to go.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll echo what everyone said. I think when looking at the report itself, I would encourage staff to also consider where appropriate, using hypotheticals. I know the Lockloven project came up tonight. I thought that was really helpful. And when looking at some of these, we give some quantitative values for how much money may be saved by reducing certain hearings or additional costs. I would, i- if you think it's appropriate, then also look at maybe using a hypothetical to walk through some of these components. It may make it a little bit more digestible when you see something actually applied versus sort of the the general, this is what we think it may be. Um, that would be my my thought. But overall, I think you guys, it is a great, this is a really complicated issue with a lot of moving parts in an area that's changing constantly. So thank you for putting this together. So I think with that, uh, where the commission can go next is we've all provided our comments. Um, staff, before we before I open it to make a motion, uh, Ali in particular, is there any last questions you have or thoughts?
Um, I don't have any. Ethan, do you have anything that you want to add? Okay.
Moment.
Great. So then I think we'll ask if any of the commissioners would like to make a motion um to support the report as provided in staff report?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. So we have the motion and a second to support the report as provided. Um, Ali, do you think, yeah? Do you want to take a roll call on that?
Um, yeah, I think I'll take a roll.
Do we need to? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. Um, Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Hi.
Commissioner Lubberski?
Yes.
Uh, commercial, Commissioner Prebitali? Um, Commissioner Saudi? Com- Commissioner Saudi, I didn't hear response.
Oh, yes.
Um, Vice Chair Samutzi?
Yes.
And Chairman Cotto?
Uh, before I answer, did I provide Commissioner Saudi the chance to provide her overview?
I didn't.
Sorry, I feel like.
Um, yeah, I didn't do my overview. I can um, my overview was I would essentially, I didn't ask for it because I think it really mirrors um the comments that were already provided. Um, I could add some comment, just um if we unless we have to do the motion all over again.
The way we could do it is, um, uh, yeah, it would be, it would be providing the comments and then repeat the motion or or repeat the motion with the amendments. And I don't know what how would you do this, Rafi?
I think the motion was to accept the report, um.
Yeah.
As an informational item. So the comments, I think we're not, we're not finding, we're not, you're not voting on consensus or a specific direction. We're just accepting all the comments and we're going to synthesize them. So I think you can do it without redoing the motion.
Yeah, yeah, and I my take would be unless Commissioner Saudi has a specific item in the report she seeks to be modified or changed, then I would, I I would like to be able to have her provide her synthesis, and then I'd be happy to make the last vote to close out the call.
Great. Um, I think, uh, you know, the thing that's top of mind for me is the inclusionary housing requirement. And, um, all, you know, what Vice Chair Samutzi had mentioned in his, one of his first um comments on this really at home, there's a tension between really wanting to incentivize developers and attract developers to San Rafael. And I think, um, we have a pretty good track record of, um, of doing the opposite. And I think we have to really work hard to make sure that we we really, um, uh, create an atmosphere that allows um for liability of our community um financially and just also socially and economically. Um, I'd also, you know, this is not a housing issue, but in terms of the district, you know, we have the least um equitable school district in this county, in this state. So our county is dead last for equity. And, um, you know, I can't, I couldn't help but think about that when I'm looking at what we're doing, you know, what housing, and we look at, you know, going to school board meetings. Um, I see, you know, we're really focusing on one neighborhood. And I'm not sure how um, the in lieu payments versus the inclusion works. But I agree that, um, without being making it easy for developers to develop here, we're not going to have a good economic basis to move forward and lift up the whole community. Um, but I it does sound like there are creative ways to use those funds um to have developer partnerships and um create equity um and provide access to homeownership. Um, so I I think those are all positive things. Um, the density bonus, um, I I I won't comment on, um, I think that like if I had to just give one short comment, it would be really like, I think that ten percent is good. We need to make sure the pro- projects are profitable. And then, um, with the Formed Line Design Review Board Subcommittee, um, I agree that we need to look at threshold, I think we need to have thresholds and really defined objective thresholds that, um, allow for pro- projects of smaller scale that are less impactful to our community to be streamlined and, um, the projects that are larger scale and have more of long term and larger impact on on some of the, um, the zones in our city that, um, that those projects have some sort of review process. And it's not, I think, not just allowing the public to comment and and so that there's like this period so that we can get some of those comments out of the way before they come to the planning commission. But I think there's some really important things that need to be worked out from a design perspective that just don't get zeroed in on when we couple it with the planning commission meeting. Um, and then I would say that the amendments, um, that final item is straightforward, and I have no comments.
Thank you. So, Ali, I think going back, are we at her at Commissioner Saudi for her roll call as to whether approving the report?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I think that so the next step would just be to incorporate, um, Commissioner Saudi's comments into the group discussion, and you would just complete the um the vote by responding. So I can either do another roll call or just um, have you submit your vote?
Uh, I can submit my vote. I think her comments are fine, and nothing seems to me that that would change what was previously voted on. So, yes, I I agree with uh supporting the report as as provided prepared by staff.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
And so we have no appeal of that because it's information only, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll close that item out. Let's bring it back to Director's Report.
So, uh, I'm going to give that tonight. So, uh, try to make it pretty quick here. Next meeting is August twenty fifth. There is one item already scheduled for that agenda. Uh, thirty-eight Upper Fremont, which is a new single family home on a hillside. Uh, following that, your next meeting will be the first meeting in September, which is September fifteenth. Uh, that evening, we'll be bringing to you kind of the general plan, downtown precise plan overview, framework, background, uh, kind of how we've gotten to where we are in anticipation of, um, the public review draft that'll be released in the next couple of months, that will then come before you for your review and recommendations. So what we're trying to set the table a little bit with for you to uh, let you know how it's gotten here, uh, the Subcommittee process, what we've done, how the plan will be organized, how the downtown plan will be organized, what some of the major changes are, kind of very high level. That way you have a little bit of background um, getting into it, uh, before we actually bring the official public review draft to you later, uh, this year. Um, then, as some of you have seen, across the street from City Hall, the Public Safety Center is, uh, complete and being, um, currently occupied and, you know, kind of move in type stuff. So we are working on arranging a tour for the Planning Commission and the DRB. So I'll get you some more information once I have those details, so you can get through the, um, uh, go through the building and see, uh, for those of you that are interested, see what it turned out like. Um, thanks to Commissioner Lubberski for, um, uh, mentioning this and reminding me of this. Uh, snacks. I want snacks too. Um, one other uh thing you may have noticed this last, uh, leading up to this last planning, or this current planning commission meeting is we've had some further changes in community development. Uh, and Derek, our longtime admin assistant, retired at the end of July. So, um, we are, uh, not refilling that position. And, uh, we are collaborating with, uh, four other departments to share admins. So you will be getting, um, the City Clerk's Office will be helping with the planning commission packets and agendas and communication. So that's who you'll be getting communication from with your packets and so forth. So, um, Brenna and Lindsay are, um, bringing a lot of their, um, amazing stuff they've done with the city council reports and packets and agendas and the processes they have uh to the planning commission. So, uh, thank you to them for that, and that's who you'll be hearing from a lot. So remember those names. Um, last item, I just wanted to give you a quick update on is about small cell antenna facilities. Um, some of you have may have heard about these over the years. Um, these are small uh, small cell antennas, that's kind of the next wave of wireless technology. They're sometimes known as five G. Um, they are a uh very controversial item. The city, uh, dealt with them, um, about two years ago, um, following some federal legislation that made it seem like they're they were going to become uh, coming fast and furious to, um, to all cities across the US. So we adopted some, uh, rules on how to handle them and went through the city council process. Um, based on federal law, we have very tight timelines in which we have to process and, um, approve them with permits. Um, otherwise, they are automatically approved. So we actually had our first group of five, uh, facilities that were submitted about eight, nine months ago, but weren't ready to actually, uh, weren't complete until beginning of July. So, uh, within that sixty day window, we, uh, rendered a decision in late July. Uh, we, we as staff, the director denied all five of them because they did not meet, um, our standards as we reviewed them. Uh, we had to allow for an appeal, uh, and the appeal was a direct appeal to the city council. Given the short timeframe, the council, there was no way to have the normal preview process, which would be staff decision appeal, the planning commission, then another appeal process, the council. So the council had decided to set it up where it's a straight appeal to the council. Um, the projects did not get appealed. The the carriers decided not to appeal at this time. They don't agree with our, um, conclusions, but, um, because that facility that was proposed was a uh, T-Mobile pre- uh, facility, um, their recent merger with Sprint has, uh, caused them to just want to double check that they still need it in those same locations. So they decided to um, not appeal it. So, um, basically, they stand denied. Uh, but five G, we will be seeing more applications for those. And like I said, they're a pretty, uh, pretty major staff burden with, uh, the short timeframes that we have um, by federal law to have to act on them. So that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. And I will, uh, ask if any of the commissioners have any communications or update to the commission.
I I got to ask, Rob, what what's going on with Second and Lincoln? How is that doing? Yeah, I had to ask. Oh, uh, fit, uh, fit. Second and Lincoln? Lincoln, yeah, right by the transit center, the huge eighteen story uh, Dostal photo, right, the Oh, uh, this, the the Seagate project, uh, housing project, correct? Yeah, yeah. Yes, third and I I call it Third and Tampa five. Sorry, I got turned around. Um, we have not yet received building permits from, but I had a call from the developer just, I think, a couple of weeks ago. They they are still pursuing it. Uh, they're completing their joint venture, you know, uh, dealings and so forth, and, um, plan to proceed, um, within the next couple of months, hopefully, with applying for building permits. So they're still moving forward. Thank you. Yep.
Uh, Chairman Cotto, I'm new to the commission, but, um, I heard Rafi mentioned thirty-eight Upper Fremont, which is within my file of good foot buffer, so I will not be able to participate in that part of the proceeding on the next meeting.
Okay, thanks for letting him know. I presume staff will look into that and see if you're in the sphere. And that segues perfectly into welcoming our new commissioner, Commissioner Hill, to his first meeting. I think it was a great meeting, and thank you for the input tonight. Welcome again. Look forward to to working with you, even if you have to recuse yourself on the next one potentially.
Thank you, Chairman Cotto. I'm, uh, grat- I have, uh, I'd like to express my gratitude, uh, to everyone who has welcomed me here. Specifically call out, um, Rafi and Ally and staff for, um, I would say, an exemplary orientation uh, that they ran, uh, through, uh, me and the other recent commissioners. So, uh, thank you for for that orientation. But that was really well done.
Thanks. Okay, any other commissioners?
Just just wanted to say briefly, Rafi, um, thanks to your, you and your team for sticking to your guns on those, um, six towers, the five G cell towers. I don't know exactly what the issues were, but I know there is uh, some concern among my neighbors here in Terre Haute about the five G towers for a number of reasons.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, well, thank you everyone for your patience with me tonight and my technological issues, but looks like uh with those updates, I will adjourn tonight's meeting and look forward to seeing everybody on the twenty fifth.
Good night, everybody.